Welcome, everybody, to the City of San Carlos, our January 28 meeting of the City Council and successor agency to the redevelopment agency. Although I don't know that we have any action on that tonight. Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America, considered Republic, which is changed, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Just one note. If you've ever been to a bar and you notice the clock is always at six, we're a little bit like that tonight. That clock right there is stuck, so it's not really five to seven. It's, actually, we're getting a little bit late start, but you'll have to use your watch or your iPhone or something like that if you want to keep track of time because what's on the wall isn't correct. With that, we'll go to changes to the order of the agenda. Does anybody have any changes? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna pull one, and that is, I've been asked by the folks who are on the traffic and transportation if we could move item 10, let's see, which one is it, 10B, if we could hold that before we get into 9A, which is the public hearing. So if that's all right with everybody, we'll do that. That'll come right after item eight. Next item is reports from closed session. Mr. Rubens was not in closed session, actually. Mr. Malpe, do you want to do that?
The council met in closed session this evening and gave direction to staff. There are no reportable items.
Thank you. So that moves us on to item four, which is council communications and announcements. Do we start with Mr. Collins tonight? Is that all right? You're turning papers. Let's start with Ms. Clapper.
I wanted to let the council know that last Thursday I attended the Peninsula Traffic Congestion Relief Alliance Board Meeting, and I'm preparing a brief bullet point summary for the council members. And one of the things that I've talked with the city manager about, Mr. Malpe, is providing information about commuting opportunities that are available through the alliance and commuting support that the alliance can provide for companies in San Carlos, in particular companies that are part of the business retention program where we're going out and speaking with those companies to make sure that they're aware of the different options that are available to them. So that will be part of what I'll include in the bullet point summary for each of you to take a look at. And the one other thing I just wanted to make everyone aware of is that unfortunately it's on the same night as the next city council meeting, February 11th, so it would take people away from here, and we wouldn't be able to go. But there's gonna be a community safety forum that will be in the library, put on by the school district, San Carlos School District, and the Sheriff's Department, and the San Carlos Youth Center at seven o'clock in the evening on February 11th, that I think many of our folks in the community would be interested in hearing about. And that's all I have to share.
Okay, thank you. Let's go over to Mr. Olbert.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, but in the interest of making sure we have enough time to address the EIR questions before the end of the night, I'm gonna pass.
All righty, very good. Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to bring up something tonight for the consideration of the council to put on a future agenda. Just as, by way of background, many people will remember that last year we had a council vacancy, and we had to go through a process of appointing an interim council member. And at the time, there was quite a discussion among the council. There was some disagreement among the council. My position at the time was that I didn't feel that we should appoint someone and then say to them after a year and a half, "Thank you very much, but we'd rather you not be on the council anymore." And I've always felt that way, and since we have an election coming up this fall, I would like to have as many candidates as are interested in running for the three council positions that are gonna be up for election. So what I'd like to propose is that we have a discussion about that, we put this on a future agenda, and talk about removing our request to Ms. Clapper that she not consider running this coming fall. Now, I don't know if Councilmember Clapper wants to run or not. I have not asked her if she is interested in running, but I thought in the interest of public discourse and giving people the opportunity to serve the city, I wanna have that discussion and see if there is an interest amongst my fellow council members of having that discussion and seeing where it goes.
All righty. So what Mr. Collins is asking is that we discuss that item just briefly here, see if we have a consensus on it to put it on the agenda for an action item, a discussion and action item at a future meeting.
Excuse me, through the chair, would that be an item that we could talk about at our retreat next week?
I don't see why not.
We're supposed to have a retreat.
In two days?
In two days, rather. Yeah, I'm sorry, in two days, this week?
Right. I don't see why not.
Okay, I mean, I'm just trying to, that might be something we could talk about then.
Okay. Let's see if the city attorney has an opinion on that. Would that be all right?
That meeting has an open agenda-type style to allow for the discourse of the council, so you could add general discussion item of that nature. You just can't make a decision on something that's not specifically noticed.
Okay. Is that fine with everybody?
Well, just to be clear, I actually think you're asking for it to be agendized in a way that you could make a decision on it.
That is true. That is correct.
Well, in that case, then I withdraw my suggestion, because then we should do it if we're gonna, because we can't vote on Thursday.
That's right.
Okay, or whenever it is. Okay.
So how do people feel about putting this on the agenda, then?
Well, I kinda feel like I should recuse myself from the discussion.
That's fine. I understand that.
So don't be looking too...
Not looking down there. Okay. Mr. Olbert, Mr. Grisilli?
Well, I didn't support it to begin with. It's not legally bindable, anyway. She can do whatever she'd like to do, or anybody could do whatever they wanted to do. So I think we talked about, I mean, nothing against Mr. Collins, but I think we beat that horse a long way, and there were some philosophical disagreements, and I'm not sure, maybe people have changed their minds, but I'm not sure that they have, but whatever. I think if we had a meeting that perhaps didn't have a large agenda, I'd be happy to sit and talk for a couple hours about that, but if it's a full agenda, I think it could go for a couple of hours.
I second most of what my colleague, Mr. Grisilli, had to say just now, and I actually think that there are probably other things that I would like to see us agendize first, and that is in no way, shape, or form any kind of comment about Ms. Clapper or your performance on the council, because I've been very pleased to be working with you.
So what I'm hearing is we will put it on the agenda for discussion?
Well, if you want to.
I think part of the idea is, if I may, I'm sorry to interrupt, but is to have the council discuss it, if I understand Mr. Collins correctly, and I did have a conversation with him earlier about this, so that we can discuss it and have a word about it and at least come to a point where that's it. When campaigning comes around, election time comes around, it's sort of, I think the idea would be that we wouldn't be discussing it then and making it part of the campaign period. So it gives us a chance to vent and vet our thoughts on it, and then we're done with it. We don't...
Through the chair, or, Mr. Mayor, I may have misunderstood, and I don't think anybody has expressed, other than Mr. Collins with him teeing up the proposal in the first place, I didn't hear a majority of voices calling to put it on the agenda.
Oh, okay. All right.
I mean, Mr. Grisilli, I think, was saying that, I don't think he would object to having it on the agenda, just that, and that's where I am, too.
Okay. All right. So I think we're at a point where we don't put it on the agenda.
That's fine. I just wanted to bring it up.
Okay. All right. Very good. Let's see. I'm losing track here. Sorry. Where am I? We're still on council communications. Yeah. And so we're, Mark is done. Karen, you're done. Ron? Mr. Vice Mayor?
The only thing I had was the mayor and Mr. Collins and Ms. Clapper and I attended Council Cities the other night, which is a meeting that's monthly of representatives from all the cities, the 20 cities and the county on the peninsula, and there was an election held for a seat on the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, which is a representative from our county on that commission, and the mayor of Redwood City, Alicia Aguirre, was elected to that post, so I just wanted to announce that.
The MTC post?
Right.
You stated that. Okay. Very good. And that just leaves me with one thing to announce, is, I believe this is where I do this, that we did meet for interviews tonight to appoint two people to EDAC, the Economic Development Advisory Committee. We had one opening that's for three years and one opening that is for one year, a one-year seat, and based on how our voting went, we've appointed Josh Zarber to the three-year seat.
Zarber.
Zarber, did I pronounce that incorrectly? Sorry about that. And Vadim Axelrod to the one-year seat. And thank you, everybody, who came in and interviewed. It's always amazing to see the people that live in San Carlos and are willing to serve us on these, serve the community on these various boards and commissions. So that brings us to item five, which is our appointments and presentations. And the first one is the presentation of a city coin to a certain individual who will meet me at the podium down there, I suppose. The other night, we had a dinner where we awarded Mr. Eaton, who's there behind me. Don and I served on the city council for, how many years, Don, about eight overlap?
Probably.
Yeah. I think about eight years overlap. When I first came on the council as a freshman, I think you were the mayor that year.
I think I was.
He was. And Don had already served on planning commission for a number of years, and then was on council, I think, 15 total. Is that right? So 15 years.
Good memory.
Well, I, yeah, I study this stuff. And during Don's time, there was a lot of things that happened in San Carlos, particularly with infrastructure. The Elms was built, the youth center was built, the Great Separation was built, the library was built, the improvements that you see on San Carlos Avenue and El Camino, which wasn't mentioned the other night.
Laurel Street.
Those were done. Laurel Street was wiped out from door to door, in the six to seven, eight hundred blocks, and we rebuilt the sidewalks and all that. So there was quite a few things that were done during those years. And Don was given the Citizen of the Year 2013 award, and we thought it would be appropriate to follow up as a city and give you one of our city coins, so I wanted to present you with that.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Anything you want to say?
First off, thanks, Matt. I appreciate it, the gesture from the city. I appreciate the gesture from the Chamber of Commerce. It's very humbling to be put in that spot. A lot of things were said last Tuesday night that were gross exaggerations, as far as I'm concerned, but it makes you feel really good. I am very privileged to have been a part of a whole lot of things in our 37 years of residency here in town, in the same home, and I have one of my sons and my grandson with me, so we've got three generations here tonight. But I'm privileged to have had the opportunity to serve and to do, to be a part of the many good things that we've done in this community. San Carlos has been a community that has progressed, it has changed, and, well, it's subject to disagreement, obviously, sometimes, but generally, it's been in the right direction. It's been a direction that is right for San Carlos. And I've often said that I do believe in change, I just want it to be the right thing. And so you gotta work through all that process, and that's why a lot of you are here tonight, too, which is just fine. That is part of the process. There's a number of things that I've been privileged to be a part of, and Matt named a bunch of them, and there's probably a bunch more, and it doesn't matter what they are. I think the point is that I, as part of a team, and when it was my turn to step up and be a leader, I tried to do that as best as I could, too. And then when it's not my turn to be a leader, it's time to step back and let somebody else do it. And that was my attitude the entire time, and I trust that my successor colleagues up here are proceeding in that general theme of how to be a city councilman, not that I can tell any of you what to do, because I can't. But, and I certainly don't even have any votes anymore. But I do appreciate the effort that has been put forth on behalf of the city since I've been off for over seven years now, and I appreciate the opportunity to continue serving in several other different capacities that benefit the community, and again, I thank you very much for the call.
Okay, picture here. Okay. Number two is a presentation of a proclamation to Mr. Long, who's been in charge of our Parks and Rec Department for many years. Unfortunately, Doug's gonna be leaving us. He's gonna be walking into retirement and probably a lot of golf or something. Meet over here.
He's got his own fan club, too. That's really pretty cool.
Do you want me to read this out to you right here? There's a lot of stuff on there.
You can paraphrase.
Paraphrase. Okay.
Anything that has to do with money.
Yeah. Okay. Well, everybody, as you probably know, this is Mr. Long, our Parks and Rec Director many years, and I just have to say this, Doug, you stepped in some big shoes when you came to San Carlos, because, as you know, we had Mr. Weiss before you, and he did a fantastic job. So you had some big shoes to step into, and I think you did a fantastic job of stepping into those. There's so many great programs that happened here in San Carlos during your tenure here, and I'm not gonna read all these things. We just, you know, we appreciate the work that you gave us, the service you gave us, all the great things that happened. One of the things that comes to my mind and stands out is the trail program that we instituted in putting in all the new trails and so forth in our parks. Our parks look great. We have a lot of great people working in that area for us, and a lot of that's attributed to you. So thank you very much for years of service here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for those kind words. Thank you to the city council. It was a wonderful four years that I had here. It's a great time working with you. Thank you to the department heads, just to let people know, this city has a level of professionalism that's been unparalleled in my career. And to put it in perspective, when I started my career, and you know that Parks and Recreation does deal with the young people in our society, the first ones that I deal, have dealt with are now 54 years old. So it's been a long road. When I came to San Carlos four years ago, even though it seems like a short stay, that has been a relatively long road. I was here when Measure U was up before the voters, and then we were faced with a deficit. We decided to do some different things in providing service models, and it's been a very educational and rewarding experience. Before I go any further, and I'll just be brief, I would like to introduce my family, my wonderful wife, Bonnie, my son, Dylan, and my daughter, Maddie. I have three others. I have five kids, three others that couldn't be here this evening. But I would like to take this opportunity to thank all of the community for their support and their involvement in all the programs and activities. And once again, I'd like to recognize my staff in the back. If you wouldn't mind standing up, they're the ones that bring the programs to you and do an outstanding job. And finally, just in closing, I would, and Guy Wallace over there, by the way, he doesn't want to stand with the crowd, but I'm gonna call him out, anyway. And lastly, I do get calls from people that are candidates for my position. It's kind of a coveted position, because it is a wonderful community. One of the questions they ask me is what my relationship is like with the city manager, and it's a simple response. I tell them, "He's my friend." I can't give you an objective answer about dealing with him, because truly, friendship certainly outweighs our working relationship, and it's been a pleasure working with you, and thank you for the opportunity to work here. He and Mark Weiss were part of the selection committee that brought me here, so I really appreciate it. And again, thank you very much. I appreciate everything.
You know, you don't have to leave, though, right? You could stay.
Are you buying him dinner yet?
Yeah.
Buying dinner.
All right. That brings us around to item six, which is hearing from the public on anything that's not on the posted agenda here. And do we have anybody here from the public that's turned in a card and would like to speak to the council? Would you like to make your way up here? Okay. So this, again, is for items that aren't on our agenda tonight, but you want to say something to the council and let us know about something. And I believe this is Scott? Is that correct? Okay.
Thank you for giving me a few moments to talk. On December 30th last year, I was traveling at about 2:30 PM. I was traveling westbound on Britton Avenue. I came to the intersection of Cedar Street and came to a stop there, at which point three children entered the crosswalk at that location. Two of those children, and this is, they were going south to north, two of those children made it over 50% through that crosswalk and were in front of my vehicle at that time. One child was trailing those other two children, and I would approximate 30% through that crosswalk. At that point, a vehicle going eastbound on Britton accelerated from its stop and forced that one child to leap out of the way of the car to avoid being hit, and it was quite disturbing. All the children screamed and ran across the street, and, you know, I took it quite to heart. I thought it was a horrible thing that just happened. And, you know, I wanted to take a moment to sort of review what I know about that intersection. I know that we have an Episcopalian church there with a daycare center. I know St. Charles School is near there, Central Middle School. There are two city parks there for toddlers, a baseball field, a rec center, and I believe another area for walking and playing dogs, quite a center for activity. And the other thing I wanted to point out is between Laurel Street and Alameda de las Polgus, there are no light intersections, and it's all crosswalks for that whole section of Britton. So why am I here? Well, we have two children, and I would hope, I'm pretty sure anyone else in this community who had witnessed that would be as disturbed about what happened as we were. And I felt it was my responsibility to come and sort of highlight this as what I consider a problem intersection. You know, to me, Britton is a heavily trafficked street at this point, and the community that's south of Britton and the community north of Britton are, in a way, being divided. If children can't cross freely, it's, to me, a problem. If they feel terrified to cross that crosswalk, that is a problem. And I just wanted to come and, you know, voice my opinion about all that and see if there's something the city council can do to look into ways to improve that intersection to make it less of a problem.
Thank you, Scott. I appreciate you coming tonight and talking to us about that. What we'll do, just for Scott's sake and the sake of the audience, is we'll have this taken up by our Traffic and Transportation Commission, have them take a look at it. Unfortunately, Scott, nothing happens quickly in government, but I appreciate you coming tonight, raising that to our attention, and we will...
We'll do it.
Very good. Yeah. So things sometimes take a little bit longer than we'd like, but they have a process to go through, and we'll get that on the commission's agenda to take a look at. Thank you again. Do we have anybody else from the public who would like to speak to the council? Okay, seeing none, I think that'll finish up on public comment, and that takes us to approval of the consent calendar, which is, we approve the consent calendar as a basket of items unless somebody wants to pull something out and then have that discussed separately.
Mr. Mayor, I think, could we pull item 7H, please?
7H, okay. Is there anything beyond 7H? There is not. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to ask that we pull item 7G and address that separately.
Okay. Now, these are pretty quick. We could do this before the public hearing and everything. Okay. Anybody else have anything they'd like to pull from the agenda, or from the consent calendar? Excuse me. All right. If I could get a motion for items A through F, and then we'll take up the other two items.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we've...
Mr. Mayor, just...
Read the ordinance.
Is there an ordinance in there?
Ordinance.
Okay. Karen, you get the joy of reading the ordinance.
Adopt ordinance number 1453 to amend the zoning district boundary map to RS-13, single-family, low-density, for the pre-zoning and annexation of the properties located at 60 and 68 Loma Road, APNs 051-472-020, and 051-472-040.
Through the chair, I apologize, but did you say RS3 or RS13? It's RS3.
I said RS3.
I'm sorry. I apologize. I didn't hear it properly.
Okay. So we good to go? Roll call?
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grokaw?
Yes. Okay, let's take up item G, which is authorize city manager to execute side letter with Palo Alto Medical Foundation regarding their payment of traffic impact fees and construction use tax. Mr. Mora?
Yes, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council has on this.
Yeah, Mr. Mora, thank you. What I'd like to understand is what is the consequence if we do not authorize the city manager to sign this letter, if the letter does not go into effect, from both a fiscal and a opportunity point of view?
I think the trade-off would be that if the city does not agree to the side letter, presumably, one, Palo Alto Medical, would have to make the full payment of traffic impact fees upfront, and conversely, we would not receive the $270,000 in general fund use tax guarantees until after both phases were complete. When Mr. Malpe and I met with Palo Alto Medical and also with community development staff, it seemed to us that this was a fairly reasonable compromise, number one, because the project, which originally was envisioned, as some of you know, as being built all at once, as being staged due to financial situations at Sutter and Pamph, and number two, obviously, it's in the city's interest to have an interim guarantee on the use tax monies, and those, of course, go to the general fund, whereas the other monies that are being deferred go towards the Holly 101 project, which is still not yet fully funded, and so we thought, you know, in the scheme of things, that wasn't a huge trade-off at this time.
Through the... If I may, just to clarify, so basically, what this boils down to is we would be accepting, what, somewhat less money, but more of it'll be going into the general fund overall?
Correct.
Mr. Malpe, did you have some to add?
Well, not specifically on this point. I need to think about that for just a second, but I did want to add, I did want to ask the city attorney to add something to the discussion as well. the city attorney to add something to the discussion as well.
This particular issue arose out of the interpretation of the development agreement and the timing of when these payments would be due. So this letter was carefully crafted with the assistance of my office, special counsel, and the counsel for Pamp to basically reach a compromise as to the timing of these mitigation payments. And so the thought was, rather than get into a larger dispute about the interpretation of a very complex development agreement, which, as you might imagine, has provisions that refer back to other provisions and the SEQA mitigation document, we felt that this was a reasonable compromise to bring to the council that would phase the, these payments basically in two pieces. One, for the initial payment, and then the second would be when we got to Phase Two of the project, which is the hospital portion of the project.
So it sounds like, then, maybe a better summary is not that we would be accepting less money overall, but there would be, we would be avoiding a risk of potential legal action or whatnot if there was disagreement over the interpretation of when payments were due.
We're resolving a...
Potential.
A potential dispute over the interpretation of the development agreement as it relates to both the provisions of the development agreement and the mitigations in the EIR for the project. And it does, it really does break it just into two pieces, the same mitigation payment.
And so essentially, I'm just, and I'm interrupting just because I want to try and move things along in honor of the desire not to have this take too much time. So at the end of the day, if the entire project gets built, we would expect to receive the same amount of dollars?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the item? Can we take a vote on it, then? Or, actually, we need a motion, so...
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve item 7G.
I'll second that.
Okay, we'll give it to Mr. Collins this time. All right, so we had a motion, we had a second. Roll call.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grocott?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, the reason I pulled 7H is because I feel I may have, I'm not sure, I may have a conflict of interest because I'm within 500 feet of this project.
I will also need to recuse myself from this item.
Okay. So the public knows, these folks have to actually leave the dais and leave the room. It's a little technicality, but that's what...
Want me to keep the C1?
Yeah.
Just a procedural thing.
I presume we should wait till they leave the room.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve item 7H.
Okay, and can we have a second? And can we just, Mr. Malpigh, could we just read this so the public knows what's going on here?
Sure.
Okay.
Would you like me to do that?
Please.
Sure. This is an item to adopt a resolution of local support authorizing the filing of an application for funding assigned to the Metropolitan Transportation Commission and committing the necessary mashing funds and stating the assurance to complete the city's proposed Crestview Drive pavement rehabilitation Phase Two project. In other words, we would be asking for and receiving grant monies to do part of our pavement management plan up on Crestview.
Very good. All right, thank you. We've had a motion, we've had a second. Can we have roll call?
Councilmember Clapper is recused. Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli is recused. Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grocott?
Yes. Okay, that was a little laborious. Those guys can come back in and take their seats, and we're finally through consent calendar. That's probably the longest consent calendar I've been through in a while. Brings us to item eight, which is reports to council. So this is where we hear from staff on any particular projects or anything.
No additional reports this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, keeping it short. Very good. So that moves us on to item, we're going to go to item 10B right now, a little out of the order of the agenda. Consideration of an ordinance amending San Carlos Municipal Code, Section 2.24, which has to do with commissioners, and we're going to hear from our city attorney, Mr. Rubens.
Mr. Mayor, council members, you might recall at your last meeting, there was some discussion about, brought by members of the public, specifically members of the Transportation Commission, that there was a conflict in our codes regarding the terms of office for transportation and circulation commissioners, and there were some other issues that turned up in my review of the ordinance after that meeting. First, I looked at the term, the term limits provisions in our, in the current code, and the current code really does limit six to six consecutive terms, or six consecutive years, excuse me, which is two terms. And the problem we had with that one commission is that they did not have staggered terms. So four of the existing commissioners would be, terms would expire at the same time in early March of this year. So I looked at the ordinance, and then I realized that the ordinance really hadn't been comprehensively reviewed in quite some time, and it had over 10 amendments over the, since 1980. So with that, I took the liberty of taking a look at other ways to kind of streamline the ordinance and the way the commissions operate in the city, to solve not only the issue of the Transportation and Circulation Commission that was identified previously, but to deal with another issue that was discussed at the, at the meeting, and that was the way the six-year time limit operated was resulting in terms ending, the six-year, excuse me, the six-year absolute limit of consecutive service was operating to stop commissioners from continuing to act during the middle of a term. So we were continually having to look at vacancies on commissions during the middles of terms. We also didn't have a definition of what a term was, so terms basically began at a haphazard date in our code. Some of the terms would end in January, some ended in May, some ended in June, and so the solution I came up with, and that's what you're being asked to look at, to discuss tonight, is a way to streamline the process of commissions so that you'll have a set term that the commissions, all, all the terms on the commissions would run from July 1st to June 30th. Secondly, there's an exception that's built into the code to do a, basically a one-time fix for the Transportation and Circulation Commission that would allow two of the members whose terms would have expired on, on March 12th of this year to go one more year, so they would have a total, could have a total of seven years of service. And then to deal with the issue of the, when people resign or move out of town and have to go off a commission in the middle of a term, I, instead of take, I looked at, there's some precedent for this at the national level, the, I can't remember the amendment of the Constitution, but it was the one that the term limits for the president. You can actually serve 10 years if you're the president, because they basically don't count two years if you take over in the middle of a term. So with that basic concept, I developed a way that we basically wouldn't count a partial term, so that people would always serve two full terms, six consecutive years, with the possibility of more, but only if they took over for another commissioner who left and created a vacancy. I also, because of the fact that there were two vacancies on the Transportation and Circulation Commission that haven't been filled, and it's been discussed among staff to reduce the number of those commissions, to be in line with other commissions, to reduce that number from seven to five, my understanding is that at times there's quorum issues on that commission, and so the idea was to bring that in line with, with the Planning Commission and the Parks and Rec Commission, to bring that down to five. And the, and then I deleted some sections of the code that weren't, that weren't really necessary anymore. One defined how we were going to appoint planning commissioners, when that commission went down from seven to five, and all those provisions aren't necessary anymore because we've already reduced the commission to five, so there was no reason to keep that in our code. And then there was another provision that I basically consolidated with another section, 2.24.060, that dealt with the term limits issue and the continuation of service. So there were two typos in my, in my proposed resolution and proposed ordinance that I just wanted to bring to your attention. And one of the whereas, the third, excuse me, the fourth whereas in the, in the proposed ordinance, the word "all" should be deleted. When I, in my drafting this, I didn't catch that error, and there's, there are commissions that have more than five, so the word "all" should be deleted from that whereas. And then on, in the section 2.24.260, under the Economic Development Advisory Commission, there was an old reference to a now-deleted section that was consolidated with 2.24.060. So that reference to .070 should be just changed to .060.
Mr. Rubens, we did get an amended...
Oh, okay, I didn't realize you got the, so the amended one did not have the whereas corrected, but it did have the code section correct.
Just wanted to make sure. Okay. Because I'm looking for "all," I don't see it, so, okay.
So I'm here to answer any questions you have. I know it's a little more than just fixing that one, one item, but when I really looked at the code, I thought there was some more work that needed to be done to fix the problem. And we do have a timing issue. I've set this up to be effective right around the time the Transportation and Circulation Commission seats expire. And I did forget to mention that with the, there's one section that's, the one cleanup section here is that if a term expired before June 30th of the year, in this one instance, while we're going through the transition, those terms would be extended through June 30th, so that we could keep that new method of counting terms.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Rubens, I, on page eight of, let's make sure it's the same page number on the revised... Oh, I see, you actually caught it. I was going to, I noticed that the version we had originally referred to a non-existent section number.
That's the one, that's the one. That's one of the typos.
Mr. Collins?
I had a question, but I found my answer.
Okay.
I just have one quick question. So assuming that the two people would extend, as you mentioned, when would their terms end?
They would end, the way the ordinance is written, they would end June 30th of 2014.
14.
The two, the two that would be, well, they, right now, they end on 2013.
Okay, so they extend out.
So they'd extend out.
And maybe this is, I shouldn't, but we just appointed two people to the EDAC Committee, and there were March dates on, that were...
Those will be autumn, those terms will extend now to, they'll go three years, but they'll get that extra little bit.
Extra few months. Extra few months. Okay, fine. Thank you.
I just have a question to see if this, anything affects procedurally what we do, because right now, when somebody comes up as a, after their first three-year term, typically it just goes on the consent calendar. We don't put them in the mix of the interview process. But that, my understanding, that's just a procedural process that's up to the council. It's not really something that's an ordinance item. Is that correct?
The, the decision whether or not to interview for, for a position is a collaboration between staff and the council. It's your discretion whether you, at the end of a term, you would like to, to open it up for interviews or reappoint. So that's not really in the ordinance. Your current process will continue in that regard.
So the way we're doing it now would continue, but we could, if we discussed it as a council, without affecting the ordinance, we could make the decision, look, rather than just automatically re-upping somebody who says, you know, "I've been on for three years, I'd like to continue on for another three years." Like I said, right now, we, we just accept that, we put it on the consent calendar, and there it goes. If we chose, as a council, without affecting the ordinance, we could say, "We're not going to do that any longer. We're going to take that person's desire to continue on, and we're going to put them through the interview process with, and we're going to do a call for applicants and, and interview everybody, including the person that wants to be reappointed."
That, that would definitely be within the purview of the council under the new ordinance as it is now. You still do not have to, the term is up, you can re-interview or you can reappoint.
Okay, very good. I just wanted to know about that procedurally. Very good. All right.
I did have one question.
Oh, Mr. Collins has another question.
Just one question, Mr. Rubens. I was, it looked, I thought, when I was going through it, that it looked like all the commissions were subject to the provisions of the Brown Act, but I couldn't see where the Parks and Recreation Commission or the Arts and Culture Commission are. Is that correct?
Well, they, they are all covered by the Brown Act. It's just in the, some of the provisions from the existing code I just carried forward. I did not comprehensively rewrite those provisions, and it was mostly because I thought that those commissions are used to the language of their commission. I didn't want to disrupt that and take it away, but all, all these bodies are Brown Act bodies.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Very good. All right, we do have someone from the public that would like to address this item. Margaret Pye?
Hi, I'm Margaret Pye. I'm the chairperson of the Transportation and Circulation Commission. I'm really glad that the revisions are being done because I think that this is a great opportunity to tweak this part of the municipal code, and I think it needs it. The first thing that I think could use a tweak is the name of our commission. I think it's caused great confusion over the six years that we've been in existence. Transportation and circulation is cumbersome, hard to remember, and I would like to propose that we change the name to the Traffic Commission. I looked it up on the California Vehicle Code, definition of the word "traffic," and it means pedestrians, ridden animals, vehicles, streetcars, and other conveyances, either singly or together while using any highway for purposes of travel. So I think using the term "traffic," although one might think, oh, well, that won't address bicycle and pedestrian. It specifically does in the, in the vehicle code definition, and I think it'll be easier to remember, and I think using accurate terms for things like this is very important in this day and age of Googling things. If you Google the wrong name, you're not going to get the right thing. So I would like to throw that out as a possibility. Also, I would like to mention once again that I really think that the need for term limits is not that strong. I mean, the city council doesn't have term limits, so I, I think the idea of forcing them out after six years, especially if there's nobody clamoring in the wings to join the commission, it's, it would eliminate the need for so much of the... And I had a question. Section 2.24020, that's on page three. It says, "All commission members shall be residents living in the incorporated area of San Carlos unless otherwise specified by the city council in the ordinance or resolution establishing the commission." Well, the Transportation Commission specifically says that a majority of members should be San Carlos residents, so I think that that should be emphasized. The vacancy announcement that went out, the call for applicants, said it was only for San Carlos residents, and the application form that's available on the city's website, the first sentence of it is, "I am a resident of San Carlos." So I just think that should be clarified. Are we, are we limiting this to residents or not, because it's a bit confusing in the, in the current wording? In section 2.24040, also on page three, I wasn't sure what the significance of the original appointee in that paragraph, it says, "The original appointee shall determine by chance the length of the original terms of each appointee." And "original appointee" wasn't really defined, so I wasn't sure who that meant. It also reminded me that if we keep term limits, then this section of the municipal code would indicate that three of the five members could leave at once. And the so-called crisis that brought this all to, to a head was that four of the five transportation commissioners were going to term out at the same time. So to have three leave out of five is almost as disruptive as having four. Another aspect of having term limits that I think is an undesirable consequence is there's no, there's no provision for what to do if nobody applies. The announcement for transportation commissioners, the call for applicants, went out on the 7th of January, and to my knowledge, nobody has applied yet. So I don't know what's going to happen if, if any commissioners term out and there's nobody who's even applying for it. I noticed that section 2.24100 on page I noticed that section 2.24.100 on page four did not specify the need for a vice-chair on the commissions, and I'd like to recommend that they specify that every commission have a vice-chair. And the extension being proposed that would allow some of the transportation commissioners to stay until June of this year, and some to remain until June of next year, is very intriguing, and it sounds like it would really solve our problem. But there's, I'm not sure how that would be determined, which two would only stay three more months, and which two would get 15 more months. So I'd like to have that specified, unless it's a good idea to just leave it up to the commission to decide. Another aspect of reducing the commission--
This is, yeah.
This is my last point.
Okay.
I appreciate your indulgence.
All right.
Another provision is, since it's going down from seven members to five members, section 2.24.300B says that one member should be a bicyclist, and one member should understand the range of transportation needs of bicyclists and pedestrians. I'd like to suggest that that remain too, as it is now, because part of the charter of this commission is specifically to reduce the use of motorized transportation. So I think it's a good idea to have a significant number of commissioners to be interested in non-motorized transportation. So, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Margaret. Mr. Rubens, there were a couple of items there that Ms. Pye addressed that were a bit technical to the ordinance. Did you catch those, and can you make any comment?
Well, the first one that I took a note down on was 2.24.040 on the Terms of Office, the last sentence that she was referring to--
Original appointee?
Yeah. You know, that is from the prior ordinance, and the reason I left that in was because you may decide to open up a new commission at some point in the future. So I wanted to leave some implementing language for you for a potential new commission. So that's what that sentence is for.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay.
The vice, the item of 2.24.100 about having a vice-chair, that's part of the ordinance I didn't change, so if you would like to introduce tonight with adding a vice-chair, that would certainly be appropriate to add from a policy standpoint.
However, we can leave it up to the--
Commissions.
Commissions to decide whether they want--
You can do that, and then that's the current practice.
That's the current practice, okay. And--
And then some of the other items I think are purely policy items, but I may have missed one of the other ones. If there's any others that you would like me to respond to, I'd be glad to--
Okay, well, for the sake of getting this done, I think what we should do is, we can just certainly discuss this and move on it, and we can review what Ms. Pye brought up to us. We can always take these things up again. It's, this is not a one-time deal, so.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may, just before you move on, I think in addressing the last point, the city council could certainly leave that up to the commission. It was, it would be the staff's recommendation that we look at just the combined years of service for those that came over from the previous commission to this commission when they were combined. And our analysis, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. City Clerk, is that it would result in Commissioner Pye and Commissioner Felitti remaining on the commission until June of 2014, and the other two commissioners coming off this June 2013.
Okay.
I did remember one other comment about the naming of the commission. Again, that would be, that's a policy direction, but it would be very easy for us tonight to introduce with that change, to call it just the Transport, the Traffic Commission.
Right, and being that they're an advising body to the council, they could take that up themselves if they wanted and make the recommendation to the council to change their commission, could they not?
Well, this is, would be in the ordinance, so their formal name, we've, they could recommend it, and then we could bring back another ordinance amendment.
Right, yeah. Again, this is not a last, you know, one-time-only thing. All right. Okay. Any questions, or should go to discussion?
No, I have no questions.
None? Okay. No questions, discussion.
Yeah, so, yeah, I think on, from a timeliness basis, I'm prepared to approve this. There is some wording in here that I can, that although I think this is a great improvement over what we currently have, I think there's still some information that's a little bit cumbersome and not articulated as clearly as possible, and I would like to make sure that this is a document so that if someone is applying for one of the commissions, they can go to this, and they can, they can get, easily get accurate information. And I found, being on the Planning Commission, I had a hard time when I was trying to understand what the different commissions did and how things worked, making heads or tails of some of the information. This is much better, but there's still some minor things that I would be interested in discussing in the future if we're doing other housekeeping on the code. But I'm prepared to approve this this evening.
Okay, very good. Collins?
Yeah, I just have, I just want to clarify something on this business of what we call the commission. Is that, is that an edit that we can make tonight?
Yes, it is.
All right. I, to me, it seems sensible that the Traffic and Circulation Commission just be called the Traffic Commission. Most people in common jargon just refer to it as the Traffic Commission anyway. I mean, people I talk to. In fact, I've probably used that term more than I've used "traffic and circulation."
Transportation.
It's actually transportation and circulation.
So--
Even I got it wrong.
I like, to me, fewer words is better, so if, I don't know how everybody else feels, but it seems like a sensible thing to do.
Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like Councilwoman Clapper, I actually would, was going to ask if staff could at some point review this with an eye towards trying to make it flow better and make it more easy to understand. I, too, found some of the language a little cumbersome, but I'm fine with the guts of the logic that had been changed here. As far as the name of the commission is concerned, I'm happy to support that if somebody wants to make that edit. I'm also, the only thing I would be a little concerned about is whether or not the other members of the Transportation and Circulation Commission might not want to see their name changed, because I guess I don't feel that strongly about it one way or another.
Mr. Griselli?
I don't, you know, I--
Yeah. Okay.
Or it's one way or the other.
All right. So--
You ready for a motion?
I'm ready for a motion, and if somebody wants to include a name change in there, feel free to do that. We'll see how it goes.
Okay, I move that we approve the ordinance, amending chapter 2.24 of the municipal code regarding commissions as presented in the version given to us this evening. Oh, ordinance number--
Introduce.
It's--
Oh, it's introduce.
Introduce.
Okay.
1454.
Okay, I'll start over again. I move that we introduce the ordinance number--
1454.
1454, City of San Carlos, amending chapter 2.24 of the municipal code regarding commissions for the document presented to the council this evening.
And there's just that one typographic error in the whereas to delete the word "all" in the fourth whereas?
I think you already got that.
Already did.
I don't think that was in the handout that--
It is.
It's in the cleanup that we got.
The one that we received this evening.
Wants to delete it.
"All" is not in there. You, you got it.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't sure on that.
I'm looking at one, two, three, four, I go to here.
Lot of paper up here.
Yeah, no, it's, it's been corrected here.
Okay. So I think she got it. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Name doesn't change.
I didn't hear anybody put it in there, so it's--
What was his question?
Did the name change? No, okay. So the name didn't change. I think we've discussed it, so we're ready for roll call.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes. That brings us to item 9A, which is our public hearing.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Al Seve, the city's community development director. And at the January 14th city council meeting, the city council conducted a public hearing and heard from those who wanted to speak on the project at that meeting. The next step would be for the city council to ask any further questions of the staff and the experts, and eventually consider a motion on whether or not to certify the final environmental report, environmental impact report. And I'd just like to clarify what certification of the EIR means, and it only means that the EIR has adequately studied the potential impacts of the proposed project. There's no approval with certification of any design, density, height, or architectural appearance. That just doesn't happen as part of the certification of the EIR. Again, it's only the adequacy of whether the document has adequately studied the environmental impacts of the proposed project. If the document were to be certified, there would be a second phase where the city's project review would take place, and that would include the ability for the Planning Commission and city council and the public to deliberate on the physical aspects and characteristics of the project. So the city council also tonight might consider further direction in terms of the proposed improvement measures that were suggested by the Planning Commission, and you can see them here. And the Planning Commission provided these improvement measure recommendations, as we discussed last time, for the project, if this goes into the Phase Two, if it goes into that discretionary approval process or review process. These additional improvement measures aren't intended to be SEQA mitigations, they're intended to inform potential conditions of approval if the project moves forward. So tonight, the city council can confirm or modify or eliminate these improvement measures, and any guidance would be helpful to the Planning Commission and staff if the project moves forward. And if the city council reaches the point in the meeting where it's ready to consider a motion, staff will be prepared to present this motion language on the screen. And in addition, this is, this is the motion for the improvement measures as well, and so we'll be prepared if you are ready to take action at some time during this meeting. As I noted earlier, there are a number of experts here this evening, and staff is here to answer your questions. I'd like to make some introductions in case these people come up and address the council and the public. Sherry Scott is the project architect. Jeff Bird and Jesse Couch are here, the developers with Legacy Partners. We have Brian Fitzpatrick and Mark Simon from Samtrans. Julian Capata, who's joined me at the table, is taking the place of Michael Kay this evening. He's with Atkins, and he's also our noise expert. Kimberly Camacho is also one of the EIR preparers with Atkins. We have Gary Black with Hexagon, he's the traffic and circulation engineer. Peter Krasnov, toxics expert. Jessica Tersher, who is our parking expert, and Stephanie Bertolo-Davis, our senior planner. And we have Anna Shimko, who is the city's special legal counsel for SEQA and land use. And so with that, that concludes staff's presentation. We're ready to move forward.
Okay. Any questions? I have one. Please don't go away. The statement that the EIR has adequately studied an issue, if you could dig into that a little bit more, one of the things that I'm struggling with, Mr. Seve, is being told that, and I heard after, I should admit, after the last council meeting, I heard a discussion offline out in the hallway, on the stairs, actually, saying, you know, the council has to approve an EIR. We have no choice but to approve an EIR. And it didn't catch me by surprise. I know that, you know, this is a process, but maybe you could walk me through, and the council, has a body like ours ever not approved an EIR, and what's the result of And what's incorporated in this word "studied"? I mean, I mean by that, it seems that we can say something's been studied, and for instance, maybe it's been determined that, as many of these items are, no impact, or not significant, no significant impact. If we disagree with that, and I heard last time, well, we have to find evidence, and I'm troubled by that, because, you know, I'm simply an elected official who runs his own business and has a family on the side, it feels like sometimes. For me to find evidence, or for anybody on the council to find evidence, seems like a pretty high bar. So what are we supposed to do if we don't trust something or don't believe something that's in the EIR? Are we then directing staff to go and find that evidence for us and to make some kind of report or determination?
Mr. Mayor, what I'd like to do is ask our special legal counsel on SEQA to try and answer that question, so I'd like to ask Anna Shimko to come up and attempt to answer that.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Seve. I believe that was a number of questions, so if I--
There were three.
Okay. Please help make sure--
The first one, okay, so the first question is, has an agency like ours with a board similar to ours ever not adopted an EIR? And if so, tell me what happens.
If, I actually believe you heard me saying in the hallway that the agency does have a responsibility at some point in the process to certify an environmental impact report. If you don't feel that the environmental impact report before you is complete and sufficient, and you're not prepared to certify the document in this form, then you would need to give direction in terms of what else you need. What other studies, what other evidence do you need to have before you? Do you need to have included in the EIR such that you could ultimately certify the document? The city, once it begins the process of completing an EIR, is under an obligation to finish that process. And at some point to, you know, if the EIR comes before you, and there is case law to this effect, if an EIR comes before you and you don't feel that you can certify it, you don't agree with its conclusions, you are under an obligation to indicate what else is needed and to continue that process in a speedy fashion such that you can certify an EIR in order to have a SEQA document that will then inform your ultimate decision on the project.
Okay, very good. And I think your answer hit actually all, I believe it hit all three of my questions, because I feel comfortable with what you answered. Mr. Olbert has a question.
If I may, thank you, through the chair. I just want to clarify some, my understanding on something, because, Ms. Shinsak, you referred to what additional studies and information and whatnot. Does that, does not the council also have the ability to say that we wish to edit the document and say, for example, that we disagree with this conclusion for some reason, we want the conclusion to be X based on the following set of facts? So that is, that is a potential change also.
You do. If you don't like some aspect of the EIR in front of you, I would say you have two different options. One is, as I said, to direct that some additional analysis be undertaken that you feel is missing from the document, such that it can be brought back before you. And the second is, assuming that you do have substantial evidence already before you to support a different conclusion than the EIR has reached at this point, you can change that conclusion. And I think there is a qualitative difference among the different topic areas that the EIR addresses with respect to your ability to do that this evening, for instance. That's just my expectation, given that I know some of the, some of the discussion has centered around-- the aesthetic impacts. Aesthetic impacts are a much more subjective topic to analyze than are the technical analyses associated with noise effects or traffic impacts. And courts have acknowledged, for instance, in cases that have to do with aesthetic impacts under SEQA, that it is a subjective area, that substantial evidence can come in the form of opinion, more so in the arena of aesthetic impacts. So if there were a majority of the council that felt it appropriate to change that particular conclusion, you may be able to do that right here this evening. However, on the other hand, I think, I don't know the backgrounds of any of you, whether you are traffic engineers or noise engineers, but my expectation would be that if you felt that there were something lacking in those arenas, then you would not simply be able to change the bottom line conclusions without substantial evidence before you. And if you felt that there were more analyses that needed to be undertaken, you could direct that those analyses be done.
So just so I'm clear, I said you answered all my questions, and one of them was, how can I be expected as a, you know, simply an elected official who runs another business? I'm not an expert in any of these things, one could argue. And you said before, you have to present evidence. So if I'm hearing your answer correctly, what you're saying is, yeah, I, we as a council, if we all were to agree to something that we don't think the EIR came to the proper conclusion, the evidence, we would ask our staff to go develop that evidence for us. Is that correct?
Yes. If there is something specific that you feel needs to be studied and that you can send your staff and the technical consultants off to study that. You know, to be, just to be perfectly honest, in my 25 or more years of practice, this is an issue I've never seen arise. So in most situations, in most circumstances, decision makers rely upon the technical analysis that's been done by the consultants and overseen by the staff, as well as here with both city attorney and outside council assistants. That doesn't mean that that takes away from your ability to disagree with those conclusions, but it is a rare circumstance that this question is raised.
And, Mark, I'm on top of your question, so are you sitting okay over there so far? So I have one other question. If we were to find as a council that the preferred alternative is different than what's in the EIR, do we have to come up with evidence on that as well? Or how do we come to that conclusion?
That's actually a subject for the second, the next phase-
So entitlement phase.
Process, right.
Very good. That's what I thought.
Very, very frequently in my practice, an alternative is actually approved at the end of the day, and we simply go through and make sure that the EIR adequately covered that, and that's a very straightforward process to undertake.
Because, if I may, the EIR is covering, hopefully, the high hurdle.
Exactly.
So if you do something ultimately that's a lower hurdle, as it were, then you're covered by the higher hurdle that you, that you're, you've covered all the issues. Okay, very good. All right.
Mr. Mayor, if I may remind all of us, I believe we had advice from City Council today that we ought to all disclose our ex parte communications at some point.
Correct. And I want to get to that. So thank you for, hold on to that for one moment. I want to get something clear with the city attorney. When we were last here on this long road, we heard from the public and gave them the whole evening to be, and I did that to balance because the previous meeting was all the applicant and the professionals, if you will. Tonight, we imagined ourselves, I suppose, getting into, you know, questions and answers of staff and so forth, and then getting into a discussion. I have more cards here. And I, quite frankly, I don't remember if we closed the public hearing, if we continued the public hearing. What do we do with these?
Mr. Mayor, at the last meeting, you closed the public hearing, and you did not reopen it before continuing the item to this meeting tonight. You selected a date certain for your deliberations because the clock and the time had run for that evening. You are not required to hear public testimony on this item tonight because you had the opportunity for the public to present their views and information to you at the last meeting before you closed it, before you closed the public hearing, period. In order to have, in order to reopen the hearing, it would require a motion by the council to reopen it, to allow the public to speak tonight. But it's not required by law, and you're free to continue where you left off at the last meeting, which would be at the deliberation stage.
Very good. Okay, so it's our choice. We could do that. All right, I have-
Through the chair, may I ask a clarifying question of council?
Sure, yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Rubens, if we were to reopen the hearing to allow public comment, do we have the flexibility to perhaps limit the public comment solely to individuals who did not speak at the prior meeting?
Well, I think that would be, I think, well, the way we've customarily done it in San Carlos and the way I'd recommend it is that you do it by time limitation and not talk about who spoke at the last hearing.
All right, that's fine. Thank you.
And so for the council's clarification, I have six speaker cards, and I don't think any of these people, except for possibly, is Dimitri in here? He is. And I believe Dimitri spoke to us last time?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Only Dimitri is a repeat, so I've got six cards.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I would certainly, you know, if people came and they perhaps liked to speak, even though it's a little unorthodox, but I think if they do, I think the time limit would have to be ten minutes-
Right, we are not going to do like we did before.
And that's it. And that would be 12 minutes, and I'm sure we can afford 12 minutes to the public. But that way, at least folks that came and wanted to speak were allowed to speak. But you're going to get more cards here, at least one more and maybe some more. So we have to sort of say, everybody who wants to, if we do this, put your card in now or forever hold your peace because that's the end of that.
Right.
And it's going to be strictly to a timeframe of, I would say, the two minutes.
Right.
I mean, that's just my recommendation. Whatever the council wants to do is up to them.
Okay, we're discussing before we even have a motion, so if anybody wants to make a motion, let's do that, and then we can have a discussion.
And the motion would be to reopen the public hearing?
And if you want to make it for a time certain, you could do that.
Oh, to limit the total amount of comment time?
Yeah, well, I would give it a window if I were you, so we're not, you know, bumping into the clock too quickly, but yeah.
Just before the motion, I just, just to clarify, once you open the public hearing, you're opening anybody who wants to speak on that particular item. What you do have discretion to do is limit the time per person.
Per person, okay.
And the total amount, if someone's there at the podium who wants to speak and it's 30 minutes left, you can't stop.
Okay, all right.
Two more, there's four.
All right. So now I have eight, I think.
Nine.
Nine?
Here it comes.
Okay. Well?
Want a motion?
Yeah.
All right. Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we reopen the public hearing, but that we ask that everyone who chooses to speak, please be respectful of the two-minute time limit. Many ideas have been expressed over the last year-plus, so if you've spoken before, please try to keep your comments brief and maybe address something that maybe we haven't heard before. So with that, I would recommend that we reopen the public hearing.
I'll second. I'll call.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olber?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes. Okay.
Sorry.
I think this says J. Stone or Sutter or something. It starts, I didn't bring my glasses, and it's very small print. And Tim Hilborn?
Jay Sutton.
Jay Sutton. And then Tim. Try to queue up, if you would, so we can get through these.
Ron, you have the time? Got it?
Go ahead.
So thank you, I'm a resident of East San Carlos, and Mr. Collins, this is my first time attending, and I'm a little upset I only get two minutes considering we just spent 10 minutes talking about changing a commission name to traffic. We could have used our time better tonight. Let me start by saying this, when you just Google environment and ask for the definition, you're talking about people, animals, plants, et cetera, okay? So I struggle with an environmental report when it hasn't taken me into account, I'm a person who lives on East Side and who will be impacted by this. I struggle with a report that doesn't take my voice into consideration at the end of the day. I think you see a lot of people here who also feel their voice hasn't been taken into consideration at the end of the day. Your elected officials, you should be standing up for the East San Carlos. I assume everybody on the council is West San Carlos. We're part of your community as well. I think putting a big barrier in between West and East Side is really going to silo our environment. Secondly, I'm a little concerned about Section 8. I have a daughter, and if we're going to start introducing an atmosphere into our schools that maybe doesn't allow us to continue to be 10 out of 10 or 9 out of 10, and similar to programs in East Palo Alto and Redwood City where maybe we're 2 out of 10 or 5 out of 10, if that's how we want to excel in San Carlos School District, I'll challenge each and every one of you. I don't think anybody wants that for our children. So I don't agree with this. Again, this is my first time here tonight, so I haven't been part of the arguments over the past year. But I think there needs to be further studies on the impact of the people, not just noise, although that impacts people, not just shadows, not just traffic, but an impact on a community. And that's where I think this report fails to address that. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim, and then Glenn Jalino.
Tim Hilborn, 1052 Southern Drive. I'll make this brief. I understand that, you know, there's kind of been the back and forth about how your decisions are influenced by the EIR and the decisions that you guys make. One thing I just want to reiterate and understand, you guys to understand, is that according to SEQA and according to the final document, the environmental impact report document, it does refer back to our city's general plan. And our city's general plan is basically the benchmark for your decisions. So any kind of evidence that you guys are looking for, please look to the general plan because that's where our evidence really comes from. You know, the EIR and the city staff and all those people, you know, they can help you, but please remember, you had citizens, including myself, come to numerous meetings for the general plan to establish what is appropriate for our city. And this EIR, and it's the way it currently is, is not. The last thing I want to leave you with is there's a small caveat in our general plan saying that if enough people come out against a development or against part of a development, the height, the noise, whatever it is, if enough people come out, according to our general plan, that's considered a significant impact. I asked you to look out in the audience tonight, the past other nights that people have been here. I think you can see that there's a significant amount of people, so that does count as a significant impact. So I hope you take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jalino, followed by Aldous Zerbergs, sorry if I'm butchering your name. Okay, good, you know who you are.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I would strongly urge you to take into consideration the environment of the people. I think that's been largely overlooked. This doesn't just affect one single individual and have an impact on a unique individual, but a group of people. And I think that qualifies for some consideration. At the last meeting, there was some discussion about the impact this project's going to have at Holly and 101. What was largely overlooked is the impact it's going to have at Holly and El Camino. I think that's going to be a significant issue, and the traffic backup during the construction phase of this project's going to be significant. Lots of emissions from vehicles sitting virtually in a parking on the street while they're waiting to get through the intersection. And that has a very direct environmental consequence. So I strongly urge you to consider that before you approve this final EIR. Thank you.
Thank you. While the speaker's coming up, Marnie Perrini.
Good evening, gentlemen and fair lady. Folks, I've been a resident with my wife here for over 40 years. When we started out on the East Side, we were the low end of the town. The community has raised itself up. We've purchased our own homes. The neighborhood has been changed tremendously. We're much better looking now. However, I do get the feeling that the people living on the other side of the tracks look down and go, that home over there is only worth half a million dollars. I mean, we can get rid of that. Ours is worth three times as much. We are not at the bottom of the barrel, guys. We can't afford to move up, but this is our home. And you guys have listened to these environmental reports, which is like shadow dancing. They keep forgetting about that big pink elephant that sits at the corner of Holly and, you know, Old County Road. You can't put more marbles into the street and have them expect to flow down the same way. And the thing about the shadows, I thought it was really cute that that little study ended at 6 o'clock. It doesn't get dark at 6 o'clock around here, especially during the summers. It's like saying, your basement's going to flood at 6 o'clock, so what difference does it make if we flooded at 5? That changes our style of living. You're going to have people in here that are not going to be using the train. How many of the people are going to come down here and are going to find jobs and go to San Francisco and ride the darn train? And look at the amount of people that are parking on El Camino to avoid the exorbitant amount of money they have to pay for the parking. They have to, some of them have to work for half an hour of their pay so they could, you know, park closer. You can't, we just can't, we're all trying to be frugal. You can't do this. What kind of legacy are you going to leave for us? In 10 years from now, when this project is rolling, are you going to pull up to a stop sign at El Camino and have one of your neighbors go next to you and go, "Good job"? It ain't going to happen that way, guys. Think of what you're going to leave for the rest of us and what your history is going to show. Don't sell us out. Thank you.
Thank you. Harrison, you'll be following, Harrison Race, you'll be following the speaker.
Hi, I'm Marnie Perrini. I live at 381 Old County Road. I am probably one of the 10 or so houses most drastically affected by this development, and my direct neighbor is here with me. I wanted to not rehash all the noise and all of these other things which are apparently insignificant. All you have to do is come to my house to know that any number of these things are drastically and devastatingly absolutely significant. The one thing I did want to bring up, which I don't think has been brought up, is that the viewing windows are only visible if you stand in the middle of the street. We are the most affected on Old County. Why are the buildings directly in front of us? Wouldn't it make more sense to have the viewing windows in front of our houses, which also aligns with everybody's backyards? This is blocking our sunlight, not only from us, but from our whole neighborhood. Let's put it where it counts. Lastly, I would like to encourage you to not think of this as a legal matter, but also that these are your citizens, your residences, your residents, and please do the right thing by us.
Suzie McKee, you'll be next, after this speaker.
I'm Harrison Race, and I live in the East Side of San Carlos, on Inverness. Been there for 30 years. I lived through all the dirt, dust, and inconvenience of the brim being broke or being written, yeah, built. I do not look forward to another two or three years of inconvenience, dirt, and dust. And it will be if this project goes through. I moved here and picked San Carlos 30 years ago because it was the city that I wanted to live in and retire in. I'm retired. It's called the city of good living, but if this goes through, it will be the city of bad living for everybody on the East Side of the tracks. Please take into account the rest of the town when you consider anything on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Ben Fuller, you'll follow this speaker.
Hi, Susie McKee, 307 Old County Road. Thank you very much for opening this up. I really do appreciate that. I'm very appreciative that you all did that. I'm just going to kind of go through some things quickly that I've said before, most of them, but I think they're extremely important. One of them is I still don't understand why it can't be moved further south so it would not impact the neighborhood. The noise level, I cannot, living right near the tracks, I cannot imagine how this is not going to be way too noisy. As I said, my neighbors have cracks in their walls from the vibrations. The high-speed rail thing, it still seems like it's so backwards to have that coming later and do this now. It makes no sense to me whatsoever. The traffic problems at, both at 101 and at Old County and El Camino just seem very crazy. Moving the parking lot further south, again, people are going to have to walk too far. They're going to park in the neighborhood. I'm not even directly in that neighborhood, but I just see it as a big problem, not to mention the other things that everybody said. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Dimitri, you'll follow the speaker.
Thank you very much for reopening the public hearing. I want to say that the current city council has given me a lot of hope and the planning commission as well. I think that San Carlos is doing a much better job. And what I want to say is that today we gave some awards to some previous public servants, and I had mixed feelings about those awards. In some ways, I knew that these gentlemen had done very important things for the city. In other ways, I felt very strongly that these same gentlemen had not successfully advocated for the East Side. Don Eden, in particular, was a very big figure in this town, and he spent a lot of years, and I can't think of anything he did for the East Side. And what I'm noticing about this council is I think you guys are thinking differently. I see more of a focus on the whole city of San Carlos, and this is your opportunity to do that. Today, you all received a board statement from the Greater East San Carlos Neighborhood Association stating our interests, written by Dimitri Vandellus, our communications director. I ask that you consider the pieces in that document. And I want to also thank everyone from the community who showed up. I really appreciate everything you guys had to say, and I hope that the council can listen to that. Thank you very much.
And our last speaker after this will be Mark Morton. So, if you want to make your way up.
Thank you, council, for allowing the residents and board members to speak one more time. I wanted to just bring up how moved and touched I am by the residents of the East Side, who I think do a far better job articulating their concerns and issues than the board has. The board, we're so used to it. We've been working on it for so long, and I think to hear the heartfelt issues that our community have brought up to you, I think is an important thing to consider. I sent a list of bullet points that the board put together in anticipation that perhaps this EIR would get approved. And I wanted to just quickly go over if indeed this Transit Village document gets approved, that the city council looks very strongly at the revised massing alternative and looks at that as the uppermost limit, that it also looks at the height of the buildings and works in the, what does that call, the appropriations or whatever phase, the next phase.
Entitlement.
Entitlement phase, if the project goes there. I think issues about landscaping are critical. We will lose our views. Our views are significant. The EIR does not show them as such, but if we lose our views, we'd like something in return. Increased landscaping, significant landscaping would at least help to mitigate that. I put in a number of suggestions regarding traffic, shuttles, and parking. I do think that it is an intractable problem to bring this many new families right into that intersection, and I ask that you look at those closely and also look at the pedestrian crossings. So, just check that out, and thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I'm Mark Moulton. I'm the executive director of the Housing Leadership Council. Our offices are in South San Francisco, and my home is in Redwood City. For more than thirty years, I've worked on housing issues on the peninsula, building high-end homes for single-family residences, and for twenty years, working on affordable housing. What you're dealing with, I think, tonight with the EIR is a process that, as the mayor has already pointed out, creates a fairly impersonal but high bar under which you need to, I think, certify that some experts have said some things that are sometimes under dispute and sometimes aren't. What I also know, after working here, and my family moved to Menlo Park after I was born in 1949, what I also know is that for thirty-five years, the leadership of this county have buried their heads in the sand, have been resigned to watch their children grow up with their grandchildren in Arizona, and have not dealt with the hard problems of growth here. Once we established our R1 communities with white picket fences, were built out and complete because we all had ours. I think it's a significantly difficult problem, and I must say that I do not envy you as council members, because it will be apparent to those of us who are growing older that it is fictitious to believe that we will suddenly move downtown somewhere and take up residence in a condominium that suits our new needs and will be affordable to us, that we will suddenly find our young professionals continuing to seek out the mid-peninsula as a place to live and work because we don't have any housing to offer them. These problems are not going to go away. It is very difficult. It is hard, I think, for people on the East Side here to believe that if you allow 280 units of housing to be certified as conforming to the EIR process, that their quality of life won't get worse. But believe me, up and down the peninsula, in cities from Brisbane to South San Francisco to Menlo Park, for more than twenty years, I hear these arguments, and I just believe that hard decisions have to be made. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's all our speakers that we have cards for.
Mr. City Attorney, do we need to make a motion to close the public hearing again, or?
Yes.
I don't know that we ever made it to open it again, but I'll make a motion now to close the public hearing.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grocott?
Yes. Okay. I do have a quick question for the council. We've been at this since 5:45. Do we need a break? Would you like to continue and take a break later? What's the pleasure?
Speaking for myself, at some point, suspecting how late tonight will go, I would like a break if it's convenient to do it now. That would be fine with me.
Who else?
I don't care, whatever you want.
Well, we go for a little while here, and we take a break a little later. It's a little hard even understanding what time it is, because, again, I don't have a...
I'll let you know when it's 10:30.
10:30, okay, thank you.
8:48.
8:48, okay. Why don't we look at taking a break at 9:30, if it's a convenient time?
I'll leave this out.
Okay. So, now we're at the point where we have discussion. Something comes up in the discussion, we have another question. We've got people here to answer questions.
I didn't get a chance to ask any question.
And I still have a bunch of questions, too.
He's got a lifetime.
All right. I didn't want to, yeah, yeah, that's good. That's true. We held off on questions. Very good. So, questions it is. I'm sorry.
Let me just ask Mr. Sivay, and I think you answered this before to me, but there were some improvement measures that the planning commission put in. Is the appropriate time to talk about those now, or we can change or perhaps adjust or not adjust those in the entitlement process, if it is approved tonight, the EIR?
Yes, tonight you can talk about the improvement measures.
But...
It's actually part of your 9AI discussion.
So, it would be appropriate to talk about them tonight as opposed to...
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay.
Well, you, yeah, you can, of course, talk about it later as well.
Okay, so that's my point. In other words, if we approve, if we approve this document, we get another bite at the apple to talk about the improvements that were recommended by the planning commission?
Certainly.
Okay.
And anything that happens in Phase 2 as well. So, if you come up with new conditions...
Understand. I'm not going to burden the council or the public if I have questions on that then tonight, because we're going to be back here again, talking, assuming that the EIR gets approved.
That's correct.
And if not, then it's moot anyway. So, okay, thanks.
All right. Is that your only question?
That's the only one I have.
Okay. Who wants to go next?
Mr. Olbert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me start with a general question, and, Mr. Sivay, I'm going to address the questions to you. Expect you to hand them off to whoever you feel is appropriate. I'd like to get a little bit better understanding of how we talk about, how we define the environment of persons in general when we're looking at impact, sort of general impacts as opposed to impacts on individuals. It's a little unclear to me from reading the EIR exactly how that works.
Did you understand that question?
I guess I'd ask Anna Shimko to try and address that question.
Yeah, throw the big metal ball at her.
I think the simplest way to do this would simply be to read from the law, if that's okay.
Sure.
The SEQA guidelines defines the environment as the physical conditions which exist within the area which will be affected by the proposed project, including land, air, water, minerals, flora, fauna, ambient noise, and objects of historic or aesthetic significance. The area involved shall be the area in which significant effects would occur either directly or indirectly as a result of the project. The environment includes both natural and man-made conditions. So, that's the end of the definition, and generally, the environment does mean that the physical conditions that exist within the area.
Let me focus a little bit more so I can, I appreciate that, so I can understand it. We did have one speaker who, or a couple of speakers, actually, who talked about how they lived immediately adjacent to Old County Road, and they were asserting, and makes common sense to me, that the level of impact, whatever the impacts are, will be greater on them, certain kinds of impacts, than somebody who lives further away. How do we define the scope? How does the law define the scope of when we say there is an impact? I mean, if we look at somebody who lives right across the street, that's one level of impact. If we look at somebody who lives half a mile away, that's a different impact. I presume, from what you just read, there's a point at which you don't have to look at the impacts because it's considered not to have any impact at all.
That's correct. So, you're talking about, basically, the geographic scope of a particular impact, and that tends to vary from environmental topic to environmental topic. For instance, if you ask the traffic consultant, he or she may say that there's, they stop looking at an impact at a point where it becomes clear that there won't be a certain amount of delay as a result of the project. So, as you get further and further away from the project, you know, maybe at an intersection near the project, you'd find there'd be five seconds of delay, and as you get further away, it's going to be, you know, half a second of delay, and you stop studying at that point. So, it really is a matter of degree.
And in that example that you were just using, since we would ultimately have to decide whether there is a significant impact just within the scope of the project, what does the law say as far as how far out we need to look? In other words, your example of traffic could one hypothetically draw the boundaries relatively narrowly around El Camino and Holly Street intersection, say, gee, there's going to be a really big impact there, therefore, there is a significant impact? Or do you have to say, no, you really do have to look more broadly because there are impacts further out, and the scope of the impact is therefore broader than just that one narrow area?
Usually, you would do both. So, you're charged with doing what seems reasonable, and, you know, it wouldn't be reasonable to only look at one intersection, even though you think that intersection may have the greatest impact. You certainly would include that intersection in your analysis, but you likely would include other further-removed intersections as well. So, it's simply based on what is reasonable, what's accepted in the industry. A lot of times, it's based on what the standard of significance is. For instance, in noise, if it's a certain, it may be a certain decibel level of increase above what the environment had without the project, and it wouldn't be noticeable half a mile away. You couldn't discern whether a noise effect were from the project, for most projects, depending on the type of project. Some impacts are judged at the nearest residential property line, just based on the threshold of significance. So, it really does vary by topic area and by the threshold of significance.
And it sounds to me like there's a little bit of reasonable man, reasonable person standard and...
Right, and professional judgment.
And professional judgment. Mr. Mayor, as I mentioned at our last meeting, I do have a number of questions, but I'm happy to either, you know, continue on with my questions, or if you want to pass the baton, whatever you want to do.
Why don't we pass it around a little bit?
Fine.
It's fine. I think some other people have some questions.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a couple of questions. Maybe this is for Mr. Sivay. I think our first speaker mentioned, our first speaker mentioned something about Section 8 housing. I don't remember reading anything in the project about Section 8 housing. Is there any plan for it?
There is no plan for Section 8 housing as part of the project. My understanding, and perhaps a housing expert would clarify, but it's a rental reimbursement program, but it's not proposed as part of the project.
Okay, so this project won't really have that element.
I don't believe, it's not proposed. It's possible that someone could request, if they moved into the project, that they could request from the state rental reimbursement through Section 8. But that's not, it's not being proposed, but I think it's something that's allowed by the state of California.
Does the state have rules about what the particular rent can be in any particular unit in terms of who qualifies for it? In other words, could I go rent a $3,000-a-month apartment and then apply for Section 8 assistance if I qualified by income?
You know, I just don't have the information on that particular aspect of it. I know this is going to be a market-rate apartment project. We know that. So, anything through the state or other agencies, I'm not aware of.
Through the chair, I'm not an expert in Section 8 housing, but I've had a few legal matters that involve Section 8 housing. And what it is, is a contract that the property owner enters into with the state or the federal government. I think it's a federal program. It might be administered through the state. And that contract provides what's essentially a voucher for housing. And then they, it's needs-based, so the income of the recipient determines what rent they can afford, and then the government subsidizes the rest and pays that amount to the property owner. I think the reason it's not proposed in this project, and perhaps the applicant could confirm this, is that the owner would be the Legacy Partners owner. And what I've seen in the plans and what Mr. Sivay was saying is that that's not been proposed, that it be Section 8 housing, that there be any contracts with a state agency or a federal agency to provide for Section 8 housing, because it would require a contract.
Okay. Ultimately, is it up to the owner of the project to decide that? In other words, if they say, "We don't want to provide it..."
Jeff Byrd of Legacy Partners might be able to shed some light on that. Mr. Byrd?
Then come on in. There's no way that...
Jeff Byrd, Legacy Partners. Section 8 housing is a federal program administered by HUD, delegated to counties. So, each county housing authority then has allocated these monies to do these vouchers. They, like was said, they are a program that is voluntary. Legacy has not had a history in the last 25 years. Legacy has not had a history in the last 25 years or so of participating in that largely because, A, it's complicated, and, and B, it tends to be for lower income housing to begin with, because generally, there are criterion that the government will provide a voucher, but they're not going to provide a voucher on a $3,000 two-bedroom luxury unit. The goal is, they look at median price of housing in the marketplace. So it tends to be the older housing that's generally more affordable. And then it is a voluntary program, and if a, if an owner chooses to engage in it, they can choose to, you know, participate and allow those voucher holders to come do it. But those individuals go to the county, they get a voucher allocated, and they shop around to find, you know, the best that they can get for it, and it's needs-based. So someone may say, they may say, you have to pay $300, and we will pay the difference between 300 up to, say, $1,500. And that's how it works. Again, it's a program. We, we do not generally participate in it. It's, it's far too cumbersome and complicated. If we have difficulty with a resident, it's very difficult because they're there by, by leave of the federal government to evict them and do things like that, and it's just really not consistent with this type of housing. Now, there is a housing element that the city has that will encourage us to provide some affordable housing for uncertain number of units based on the city's criterion, and we may do that. We may, you know, we have a choice to pay a fee or to cooperate in doing that, and, generally speaking, we found ways to provide that affordable housing, but it's, it's relatively small numbers of the units. I think the maximum is 15% of the units. But we could choose to do a smaller portion and pay some in fee.
Okay, and then just one last question for you while I have you up here. What, can you give me a sense of what your minimum and maximum rents are that you're, you're thinking about at this time?
Well, you know, the market determines that, but based on the marketplace that we see today, the average unit rent for a one-bedroom there would probably be somewhere between $25 and $2,900 a month. A two-bedroom would be somewhere between $3,000 and $3,300, $3,400 a month, and a three-bedroom would be somewhere between $3,500 and $4,000.
Okay.
And that's consistent with, you look at the similar projects up and down the peninsula.
Okay. No, thank you. All right. I had another question, and I, I promise it's my last question for now.
That's right. Go ahead.
I heard that.
I think Ms. McKee mentioned why not move the project further south, and I know it's, it's in here somewhere. Maybe, Mr. Sivay, you could just, can you give me just a brief answers? Why don't we move this project down to, say, Olive Street?
There's a number of different answers to that, beginning with the fact that what's being proposed is, you know, we have to respond to what's being proposed, and so the leasable area that Sam Trans has agreed to lease is the proposal that's being considered. So that's one of, it's defined by the proposal itself. Physically, what we've seen and heard is that to the south of Holly, everything starts to get narrower and narrower the farther south you go on El Camino Real, and you can see that just driving down the road. So from the base of the berm out to the, to the El Camino Real, it gets much more narrow. And so you, to provide the Sam Trans parking, to, to move that parking south, what you're left with is a very narrow tail of land from the south part of the parking area, which is about a Royo Street south to the southern part of town. So if you look at what's left, you have a very, maybe it ranges anywhere from 25 to 40 feet wide after you take out sidewalks and setbacks and landscaping and things like that. So you're left with maybe, in good areas, like 25 feet wide to, or a depth of 25 feet. So the question is, what could you even put in to 25 feet? Is it develop, is it economically feasible, or would anybody even consider putting units down there? And even if you could, how many could you get? And essentially, if you look at it, the answer is you can get very few units, and it's questionable whether it would be feasible to do anything of any, you know, marketable size or scale. So hopefully, that answers the question.
It does. Thank you.
It doesn't for me. I want to tag on to that. You said that's, we have to address what's being proposed.
Yes.
If we felt like, number one, I, I've heard people talk about this just like you have just now, and, and I can respect that, but I've never seen any attempt to do any kind of graphic that would demonstrate what you've just said. And I'm not convinced, you know, the attorney talked earlier about evidence, and I'm not convinced that we have the evidence that shows you couldn't mitigate the height of the buildings on the north end of the project where most of the concern seems to be from the east side by putting some units to the south. And I don't necess, myself, I, I'm not convinced of it, and I'm not suggesting necessarily that it would be what we would think of, the same kind of project as what is to the north. In other words, that high of a density. But would there be the possibility of doing, for instance, townhouses or duplexes or something that's on a smaller scale, again, just to scrape away some of the density from the north and put it to the south? And if we wanted to look at that, suggest it, make it a part of this document, can we do that?
You have to respond to the project that's being proposed by the developer at this stage. And so you have a proposal on the table, and so by law, the city is required, and again, the attorneys can chime in at any time, but the city is required to respond to what's being proposed and see if that, and analyze that in terms of its environmental impact. The city council, the planning commission staff could make suggestions in Phase Two about, you know, where to move density to make it better in terms of height and massing and bulk of the development project. But it wouldn't, I don't believe it would be appropriate at this stage to start moving pieces of the building to different areas of a, of a site, because then you're starting to get into the discretionary approvals, the, the architecture, the mass. At this time, you're just trying to find out, you know, is it, does it adequately assess, analyze the, the outer limits of this development proposal? So if in Phase Two, the planning commission and council wants to look at, you know, do a more in-depth analysis of how many units could you really build, that could be done as, as part of Phase Two. And the other thing is, the developer, even if the city wanted to or suggested it or recommended, the developer would have to be willing to build it. So the city could ask for the developer to do that, and the developer could refuse to do it.
All right. I, I hear what you're saying. But one of the issues that I'm thinking of when I talk about peeling off some of the density on the north side is this issue of, one of the ladies brought it up tonight already, view corridors, and also just, you know, appearance and views from the east side to the western hills. And one of the criticisms I've heard very strongly from the east side is this, you know, the height, the overall height and how it's blocking views from their neighborhood. And that's why I'm, I'm thinking of that as, as a mitigation. So how do you, through the SEQA process, how do you, how do you address that?
Well, one of the ways that this document in the SEQA process says that cities should look at it is to provide alternative scenarios in the EIR that may be environmentally superior to what's being proposed. So in this EIR, there are two, or three, actually, but two viable, perhaps, scenarios. One is called a revised massing alternative, and one is called the reduced intensity alternative. Both those alternatives deal with the issues of height and bulk and mass and things that we've heard from the residents of the east side, as well as Mr. Crabbe, the local architect, who has proposed some various plans. So these are the two alternatives that significantly change the bulk and mass of the building on the site that we know is, is the development site, and those are the ones that the city should take into consideration at this time. They do, again, as noted, I think, to the mayor's comment, they do lower the heights in different areas, and there's comparisons in this document. We can walk you through those, and so that's how we believe the council should consider this, and I think that's what state law also suggests that you do.
Mr. Mayor.
May I tag on that question?
Can I just add a quick addition to that?
The, the EIR process is really more about setting a ceiling, what the project isn't going to go beyond at this point. The alternatives identify, you know, as Mr. Sivay said, two options, but there, you know, there are really endless number of design options, as you well know, as a designer, that, that if approved, this project may ultimately yet turn into. And so there's nothing that prevents the council, even the EIR itself, if you went beyond the envelope of the EIR and the entitlement process, you'd have to come back and do some more work on the EIR. But you're, it's not limiting you to those design options during the entitlement phase.
I may come back to that, but I want to let Mr. Olber.
Thank you. Mr. Sivay, as you were answering the mayor's question, you reminded me, as I recall, in the EIR document, there is a discussion early on about why the alternatives that were studied were in fact chosen. And I seem to recall that there were, there was some reference made to other options that could potentially be explored, like smaller buildings and whatnot, lower heights, that were not included because they were economically, they were deemed economically infeasible by the, by the applicant. At least, that's what my recollection is. I'm trying to remember if that's in fact correct. Okay. Question I have is about that, that always is within the context of a particular set of contractual arrangements. And the one I'm thinking of right away is, you know, for example, if Sam Trans were to have a ground lease arrangement with Legacy where the annual fee was $5 million a year, you would probably require very tall buildings to justify that. So in a sense, the economic envelope of what's feasible is defined in part by the contractual payment between Legacy and Sam Trans. Was any of that discussed in, flexibility in that discussed in terms of trying to establish what options should be studied or shouldn't be studied purely on the basis of economic feasibility? Do you see what I'm getting at?
Yes. I would have to say that the answer is no. It's really a little bit of both, but no, because while economics is critical for, not only for the developer, you know, and based on the feasibility, is it a constructible project? Can you actually build it, you know? Can I afford to build this? Can I build the infrastructure? So it's important to the developer. Of course, it's important to the city, and economics should be part of the city's analysis of this project, but not as part of SEQA. So the economic functionality of the development, while we've talked about it, I think for a long time, it's just not part of, of the analysis that went into this document.
Pardon me for interrupting, but I think I'm making a slightly different point, but I just want to make sure that maybe I'm mishearing you. What I'm talking about is not the analysis. I agree with you that SEQA says you're not supposed to focus on that. I'm talking about the alternatives being evaluated.
Yes.
In other words, the things you're analyzing.
Yes.
To me, those very much depend upon the economics, because, you know, otherwise, hypothetically, I could ask you, why didn't we study putting in one-story buildings? There's a reason why we didn't do that, and I suspect the reason is economics, which is fine, but that's where the economic relationship between Legacy and Caltrain and other factors starts coming into play.
I, I, yes. I can understand where you're coming from. I get it. I, that's more clear, and yes, I believe that there is some veracity to what you're saying there, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Always.
Oh, you've got more?
Ms. Clapper, have you had a chance to ask something?
She's, no, go ahead.
The questions I have have to do with the table of improvement measures, which I think we're going to be getting on to later, so I'm going to hold off.
Perhaps even another evening, but go ahead.
Until later this evening, of this day, not of tomorrow.
As I mentioned, I enjoy working with you, particularly because of your optimism. One question I have, Mr. Sivay, another question I have, which I suspect is a Ms. Shimrock question, but that'll, I'll leave it up to you. To a certain extent, particularly when looking at cumulative impacts, EIRs look to thresholds established by, by previously approved EIRs, such as the berm project in this, in this particular case. My question has to do with what, if anything, do we do about situations where an earlier EIR came to what later experience showed arguably, at least in my opinion, to be an erroneous conclusion? And, and the example I'm going to use is, the final EIR on page three dash 25 states that the berm EIR, so it's referring back to the berm EIR, it says, "The berm EIR concluded, quote, 'Because the rail line is approximately 75 feet from the eastern curb of Old County Road, the change in elevation of the track bed would have little effect on a resident's perception of their sense of enclosure,' end quote." My, my guess is, we could prob, and I'm not trying to be facetious here, my guess is, we could probably find quite a few people in East San Carlos who would disagree with that, that conclusion. And, and so me looking at this EIR, building on that earlier EIR, I'd say, well, gee, that, I'm building on a flawed foundation, at least in that one particular context. So do I have to simply accept the flawed foundation, or can I go back and say, wait a minute, they didn't get that right? There, there really is, it, it, I have a different standard for looking at the cumulative impact.
I'll ask Mr. Capata to try and answer that one.
Okay. Councilmember, the way that I read the final EIR for the berm project, it did conclude that building the berm would result in a significant impact. So our EIR, the EIR for this project, did have to look at the built environment at the time, the fact that that berm already exists, and I believe that Michael Kay did a very good job of explaining that at the last meeting that we were all at. When we're looking at this project, though, what we had to do was look at scenic views in the context of the general plan, how they're listed and identified in our, in your general plan, as well as how SEQA treats scenic views. So in this case, SEQA makes it very clear that private views are not, for lack of a better word, the environment of persons in general are not under consideration in SEQA. Now, doesn't discount that having new buildings built 75 or 100 feet away would change your views, but would it constitute a significant impact? Would it affect publicly available views of identified scenic vistas? Through the evidence in this EIR, it, we, the EIR determined that it would not.
Yeah, just to interrupt to clarify something, I actually wasn't thinking of this in the context of the vista impact, because what I was reacting to was the comment about residents' perception of their sense of enclosure, as, as that that was, and that's, that's certainly, scenic view impacts are part of that, but sense of enclosure is driven by a lot of other factors, other than just whether you can see a particular mountain or not. So that, that's what I was focusing on.
Understood, but again, in, in the context of SEQA, that wouldn't be, that wouldn't meet the definition of the environment. It's.
Oh, I see. So you're saying that, that's simply not, it may have been, it may have been a statement made in the earlier EIR, but it, it was not an environmental conclusion?
Right. And, and one of the things I wanted to add to that through the mayor is, it wouldn't be considered, you know, what was referred to by Special Counsel Shimko as a threshold of significance. So something that's measurable, like you say, it's somewhat subjective, and SEQA tries to get to more measurable objectives.
That, if I, if I may, that, that's actually is another general question I have. My understanding from some research that I've been doing is that, at least in some areas, courts do have a, a principle of allowing what a common, a layperson would think of as subjective measurements into all sorts of processes and evaluations. For example, specifically in the case of noise. In other words, regardless of what the reading on the decibel meter may be, if there is legitimate evidence that enough people are having difficulty sleeping because of something, that is admissible evidence in, in court, because it's, it's, it may not be quantified, but it's, it's still objective in the sense that, that it's an observable phenomenon. And does that also apply here as well? In other words, or are you saying that it strictly has to be something we can assign a number to? And by the way, I apologize for getting your name wrong.
That's okay.
Ms. Shimko? I wrote it down, so I won't make that mistake again.
Not a problem. I do want to go backwards just for a second to piggyback on what Mr. Sivay and Mr. Capata were saying about the.
were saying about the cumulative analysis and the role of the prior EIR on the BERM. And my recollection, and correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding was that it was determined that there was an impact from the BERM, and there was a statement of overriding considerations adopted by the city council at that time in approving the BERM, so that it was acknowledged that there would be a significant visual impact from that project. In any event, that occurrence at this point really is water under the bridge, so to speak. We take the environment as we find it now, and the baseline that we created this EIR from is the existing physical conditions, and that's what we build upon to look at whether the delta, the difference between today's existing conditions, which includes the BERM being in place and having the project there, whether that delta is a significant, constitutes a significant impact.
I want to jump in on that, because this is something that Mr. Olbert has talked about before. The BERM is now in place, the previous EIR deemed that a significant impact on views. And so the BERM goes in, and now the western hills that someone could see entirely before, now they can still see them, but first they have to look over the BERM. And so they're missing, you know, however many feet that is of western hills. And Mr. Olbert asked this question before, you know, it's like the sun going down. When you see the whole sun, hey, that's great, I love the sun, but as the sun is starting to go down over the horizon, at some point, you know, there's this feeling of, it's going away, I'm not going to have any more. So is that considered more significant, or because it's just a little bit that's going away, less significant? We already identified, I think, that from the previous EIR, unlike this EIR seems to be defining it, it is a significant view.
Or at least it was.
And we could determine that it still is.
In the BERM EIR, it was determined that it was significant.
Right, and here's my point, here's my point, though, and I'm questioning on this. If it was significant before, and not because it's somebody's private yard view out of their, you know, they step into their backyard and they look, but it must have been determined before that it was somehow, to use this man's terminology, a public view. And now, in this EIR, suddenly it's not a public view because it's only a view from someone's backyard. And I asked before at the last meeting, I consider it a public view, because if I'm driving, I use the example, if I'm driving on Old County Road, and what I got back again from the attorneys was, well, that's not a public view, because when you're driving your car, you're supposed to be paying attention to the road, not looking off to the western hills. So what I got from that is, the only time you can have a public view is if you have a public park. And if you're blocking the view from a public park, now it's a public view. I don't get it. When I, and I'm going to just throw this in there, when I go to the history museum and I look at views of San Carlos that are shown there, there are some views of San Carlos looking at the western hills, indicating to me at least that historically, that's been considered, somebody considered it significant enough to record it in our history book, if you will, that these views from here over to there are significant, are meaningful to this community.
And I believe that at least one of the viewpoints in the EIR is from a public park. Is that not correct? So there is an analysis of the impact of the view from a public spot. In addition, there are view analyses in the EIR of points that are public but are not publicly, maybe from a street, for instance, a street corner. And, you know, a lot of times in views, we've discussed views a lot, that they are, it's a very subjective analysis, but a lot of times I've seen EIRs weigh the different views based on the amount of time that one spends there, the quality of the place, and that's why generally, a public spot where people do spend more time, such as a park, is often accorded more weight than a street where you are in movement. And the views of a select few, the views from a private home, for instance, in general under the law, are not accorded as much importance under SEQA.
And so one more question on that, because I'm trying to understand this idea of public. On both sides of the Holly, Old County Road intersection are privately owned, but rather public places, you know, I can go over there to the cleaners, I can go over there to the donut shop, I can go to the 7-Eleven, whatever, you name it, that's on one side, and on the other side, I can go get my car fixed, okay? And there's some restaurants in there. So when I go to those establishments and walk in and out, and I'm in the parking lot and so forth, that's considered a public view, but what I heard you say is it may be considered a little less public view, because I may not be spending quality time there, having a picnic, I may just be going in and out of my car to take my laundry to the cleaners. Did I read that correct?
That's an accurate assessment, but again, it's really up to the EIR and the decision-makers to decide how you want to assess the aesthetic effects. And there, you know, there have been cases where views from private homes have, the aesthetic change in the environment from private homes has been deemed to be such a big deal, such as if you're putting an aluminum cover over a four-acre reservoir and an entire neighborhood can see that, and it's reflective, that has been deemed to be a significant impact under SEQA that needs to be analyzed. Alternatively, there are numerous cases where the aesthetics of the area were going to change by virtue of a project, but the fact that some people could see it, and it might block certain views of hills, was not deemed to be worthy of being characterized as a significant impact, because it was a more urbanized area, and because design review requirements were going to pertain, and there was a process in place to ensure that the design was appropriate. So it's, it involves the weighing of a lot of factors.
Okay, so I'm just going to throw in one more thing on that then. From what I heard you say, there could be a determination that when you're dealing with not just one home, but you're looking at it as, this is a neighborhood, there's 300 homes over here, there's 200 homes over here, being, you know, north and south of Holly, and in our estimation, because it's a neighborhood and it's more than just one or two residences, we think of that as a public view, therefore we consider it significant if it's blocked.
You can choose to make that determination, yes.
Okay, very good, okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm afraid, however, that you have not yet answered the question that I came up to answer.
And there's another point to make.
Yeah.
Is that views, you mentioned the western hills, I heard the western hills mentioned. It's how the views are defined by the city or other documents, maybe it's the general plan. And we'd like to clarify that the views that were discussed as being blocked in that BERM EIR. So I'll leave it up to Mr. Capata to note that.
Thank you. What the BERM EIR stated was that the elevated rail would obstruct the views of the Aguero, Aguea Park Hill area for northbound travelers along Old County Road, south of Holly Street. And so it was the obstruction of those views with the development of the BERM that the EIR of that project was concerned with. Going back to now, what you're looking at is that those are built, and the views from Holly are already, or on Holly Street are already obstructed. So development of the project, when you looked further into the EIR, in the final EIR, views of those hills from the greater East San Carlos neighborhood were examined within the EIR. Photos were taken, simulations were developed, and the EIR determined that views from, views of those hills from various locations are available, but they are relatively few, and they're not what would be considered panoramic or prominent. So the EIR does acknowledge that the view of the hills does contribute to the overall aesthetic of the neighborhood, as you will, but views of, or views of the hills, like I said, are limited and not a prominent feature of that neighborhood at this time. And so that's how the EIR made that conclusion.
Okay, that's good to know, all right. Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My next question involves something that Mr. Marsters had brought up at a planning commission meeting, but I want to take a slightly different tact on it, and it refers once again to Resolution 2003-79. And there's a reference in there to, which is incorporated by reference in the general plan, there's a reference in there to the assertion that this entire railroad corridor shall be planned to appear as one integrated project. I have heard staff's earlier response to Mr. Marsters' questions about the tact that was taken on this project versus that statement. My question really is, was an analysis done at any point, because I don't remember seeing it, of what this project, if approved, will have as an impact on potential development on the southern part of the property? It would seem to me to actually reduce the chances that any kind of development will ever take place there, because basically this is the land that's being used here is, for the current project, is the prime land on the BERM area.
It did not. Again, I think going back to something we touched upon earlier, is that we have to respond to the project. Now, perhaps under cumulative conditions, one might look at something like that, but this is outside the project area that's a part of the project description. So that's the tail end that we just, are you referring, if I can have clarification, about that tail end south of Arroyo, is that what you're referring to?
That's correct, and I do, I do understand that the applicant has not proposed to develop that, and in fact, I don't even think their ground lease covers that, okay? I guess my question really, in a different set of words, would be, why didn't we require some assessment of what that bifurcation would do in terms of making an environmental assessment? Because given that we said we, the intention of the city was to see that this all be planned as an integrated development. And I suppose it can still be planned in piecemeal as an integrated development, but I'm just wondering why that wasn't done in this, in the EIR analysis.
Staff interpreted that to mean that it, you know, didn't have to all happen at the same time. Again, we were responding to a proposed project that was applied for. It didn't seem like this had, there was a cumulative impact on the south, you know, tail end of the land. The area is zoned according to our zoning in our general plan, so there are land use guidelines that allow for certain types of development to occur. I think it maybe goes back to perhaps what the mayor was suggesting, is that, you know, there hasn't been any physical analysis of, you know, how much square footage could you get for commercial or for residential? And staff, nor the consultants, we didn't see that as part of this SEQA document, it wasn't part of the project.
So when an applicant, just in general on an EIR, and an applicant submits a proposal, there's obviously some back and forth that goes on between, I presume, staff and the applicant to look at the alternatives that get studied, like the various alternatives that we were, you and I were talking about a few minutes ago. Are we not allowed by law to say, hey, you know what, you need to increase the scope? Even though you're not developing, even though you're not planning on developing this piece of property, we've determined that it's an integrated thing, and therefore it needs to be looked at in terms of integrated impacts?
My understanding is that the city is not allowed to require the developer to increase the scope of their development project, and that is something I'd be happy for the attorneys to clarify, but that's my understanding.
Okay, but just to be clear, I'm not, I'm not asking that they be required to spend money on it, I'm talking about require the EIR to study the impact on it.
It would be a different project, and it may be something that the city would take up as a project on its own, and the city could study what would happen to that south piece, and we could do our own separate SEQA document on it, but we couldn't ask the developer or require the developer or Samtrans to put that as part of this development project. But we can study it separately as a city, if directed to, staff could take that up as a separate issue. And I would go back to the point that we just went through a general plan process in our zoning code update, which did look at the type of development that could occur there, and there was a great deal of discussion about what could occur on that property and what would be feasible.
What is, what is staff's view on the envelope of possible developments that could occur on that southern tail section, and how that changes if this project is approved?
I don't think it does, this is my professional opinion, is that I don't believe this project does change what could be developed on the southern part of the property that's left over. Historically, what we saw was commercial retail service-related uses. It's very narrow. Quite frankly, I would, I would think that having looked at a lot of residential and analyzed, both in a physical sense and in a fiscal sense, residential development, that you would, it would be quite difficult to get any kind of density in there. You may be able to get efficiency size units of residential development in there, but it would be very difficult, and they would, again, be very small, unusually small units. You know, they wouldn't be your basic market rate unit. You're looking at maybe, you know, 600 to 800 square foot units, and very few of them for, from a residential standpoint. From a commercial standpoint, there is some viability. Samtrans, over the years, has talked about their interest in maybe doing something with that commercially. I know that the city has talked about and considered commercial uses for that area in the future. Right now, we have some commercial uses that are there, which consist of the auto sales dealerships and the hubcap sales that go on down there. So the city has the discretion, and in its zoning code and general plan, we've kind of laid out what we think could occur there, and have established some physical standards for that.
I realize I've been overlong here, may I ask one last quick question on this round?
Sure.
One of the speakers, I believe it was Mr. Hilbarn, referred to a clause, which I didn't have familiarity with in our general plan, that if a sufficiently large number of residents came forward, I'm paraphrasing, to complain about a potential development, that that was required to be looked at as a significant impact. And I, I wanted to make sure I got staff's perspective on that assertion.
I'd like to look that policy up. I'm not, you know, off the top of my head, but I can certainly start looking for that policy and maybe get back to you later in this meeting.
That'd be fine, thank you.
You have other questions?
Actually, not, no, come on.
Yeah, okay.
Just more than you.
I have one, and after my question, I think I'd like to take a little bit of a break, because it's 9:30 right now.
9:37.
9:37, thank you. So at the last meeting, there was a, there was a topic that came up regarding noise, and the, specifically how noise is to be mitigated within the units. And someone from the audience had questioned that and said, this is incongruous with building code, because building code says that 8%, if you have a 100-square-foot room, then 8% of that square footage has to be provided with light, or, you know, a light source, a light, like a window, that's 8% of the total square footage of the room. And then half of that, 4%, has to be provided natural ventilation. So in other words, you have to be able to open the window and have 4% of that footprint area of a room, you have to provide natural ventilation for that. So that's building code. But the solution to noise within the units is triple-pane windows that you're not supposed to open, because you're trying to keep out the noise. How are we supposed to accept what seems to be incongruous with... How are we supposed to accept what seems to be incongruous with a recommendation in the EIR to mitigate for noise and building code?
The buildings would have to be built to meet Title 24 and city standards, which I believe is interior noise levels of 45 dBa. Methods to do that would include acoustical treatments as well as double-pane windows and those types of things. However, that would not preclude the doors and windows from being open. That would be the choice of the individual residents that live there. Typically, in projects such as this, residents that choose to live next to a transit-oriented development accept the fact that there will be louder noise from that development for the amenities that are included in that. And so while it is a technical noise issue, every resident that looks to leasing an apartment in there will understand the payoffs and drawbacks of living there. So the building would be designed in such a manner to meet that standard, and then whether the windows are open, whether somebody decides to keep their doors or their patio screens open, is entirely up to them. That's, you know, that's really the best answer that can be given on that.
Interesting. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I might ask before you, the council takes its break here, just because we've asked several times, maybe we could cover the ex parte communications before that slips away?
Yes, let's do that. All right. I'll jump off on that. So what this is, we're required to let the public know if we had any meetings with anybody on this project to discuss it. And so that would include if we met with someone from the East Side, or a developer, or anybody. And I'll start off, because I met with virtually no one, except I did meet with Mr. Marsters and one of the other planning commissioners, just to go over their meetings and try to ask them to encapsulate what came out of their meetings, since I didn't get to go and sit in on those, all of them. And then I was asked by Mr. Ward back here, and Jeff, and some other people from Legacy to have a meeting in the mayor's office, and I sat down with them and met with them one day, one afternoon, and they went over the project and hit on some of the highlights of the things also that they had experienced with the planning commission. Other than that, I have not met with anybody on this. We'll just start down here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've met with quite a few people in a number of different environments. Mr. Rubens, do we have to specifically list all of the different meetings we had, or can we just summarize them?
I think, you know, it's going to depend on how many you have, but I think that you can summarize the meetings by the interest group or the type of group and the number of meetings and what was discussed.
That's fine. I've met with Mr. Berg and with his colleague Jesse and John Ward, several times, actually, twice. I've met with Scott Marsters from the Planning Commission. I've met with Mr. Scanlon, Mike Scanlon, who is in charge of SAM Trans and Caltrain. I've met with various members of SAM Trans's staff. I've met a number of times with members of the GESE Board, both individually and collectively. And I've also had separate conversations on completely unrelated aspects of this topic with Mr. Collins and with Ms. Clapper. They were all over the course of trying to, and I've attended, I think I attended all of the planning commission meetings. That was all an attempt to familiarize myself with the complexities in this situation before us, and also to be responsive to individuals who had just asked to meet with me. And I have to say, I found them all very helpful. Everybody has a different point of view. I still feel, however, at the end of the day, that I have a completely open mind on the subject, and I'm weighing this issue on its merits.
I have met with folks from the East Side. I've met with folks from SAM Trans, and I've met with folks from the developer. So I've met with interested parties. I haven't had as many meetings as Mr. Olbert has, though. I think I met once with a developer, once or twice with SAM Trans, and folks from the East Side more on a personal basis of comments and questions and things like that.
I've met with members of the GESE Board. I've also had, met with some of them individually. We've talked a lot on the phone. I've met with Mr. Scanlon, Mr. Simon, Mr. Ward, Mr. Bird, Mr. Couch. I'm trying to think of who else I've met with. I have exchanged emails, received information, and sent information. So I've had, I think, quite a bit of exposure to all sides of this issue, and I have to say, it's been very educational, and all it has done is produce more questions and left me with quite an open mind. Thank you.
I'm including my time on the planning, I'm including my time on the planning commission because I think that's relevant to all of the input that I've received over a period of time. So that would include I've met with representatives from Legacy, various representatives from the Greater East Side San Carlos organization, with Amy Chang, with a variety of individuals from the Planning Commission and EDAC, and the Transportation and Circulation Commission, also individuals from the council and the Housing Leadership Council, from the Chamber of Commerce here in San Carlos and the Housing Leadership Council. And I also wanted to disclose that in the past, I worked for a nonprofit on whose board Mike Scanlon and Seamus Murphy from SAM Trans were on that board. But we, there was no information exchanged at that point in time, and I had not spoken to them about the project since then.
And I was just reminded by your comments, I did meet with Amy Chang as well. And then Mr. Collins and Mr. Olbert and myself were at a lunch, HIA lunch, Harbor Industrial Area, where, again, Legacy gave a presentation.
And I'd also like to say, I also had a phone conversation with Amy Chang.
Very good. Okay. I think we're covered. All right. I have no idea what time it is now, but we'll take a...
Quarter to 10.
It's quarter to 10. All right. Five to 10, we'll come back here and continue on. Two people, Karen and Mark. Do you know where they are?
He went upstairs.
Yeah, he went to the vending machine.
I'm not stupid.
You're smart.
I've done this before.
Yes.
Yes, you have. There's Mark. I just needed Ms. Clapper. I just saw her. I think she just stepped out for a second.
Jeff got his Coke Zero.
Anybody seen Ms. Clapper? We can get going here. Here she is. Okay.
Oh, wrong. I've done this before. I can tell.
Yeah.
Talk as long as you want. I got more handy upstairs.
He did that on purpose to fake us out. Okay. Mr. Olbert, you had some more questions?
Yes, but I think we actually, I do, but I think we were going to give other people an opportunity to ask questions if they...
I don't know if anybody else has any other questions, although...
I don't have any questions at the present time, but...
I have a question about our process.
Process, okay.
I'm very focused on the specific scope of the EIR, and I don't know if we're also using this time to just kind of explore options for what the design and what the economic feasibility and the political doability of this project is, if we're exploring all of those questions now? Or, I guess I'm just kind of a little bit concerned, or if we're trying to break the planning commission's record for how many times they met.
No, we're not trying to do that if we don't have to.
So I'm just, I'm just feeling a little bit like I'm floating out at sea, like Life of Pi, and there's a tiger at the other end of the boat here. And I'm not sure when I, when we're going, I'm going to get to wrestle with it.
We'll get to wrestle with those when we get through the EIR.
I know. I don't know. When are we going to get to wrestle with the EIR? And the actual...
As soon as we answer all the questions about the EIR and the EIR process.
And that's what I'm trying to get clear on.
Right.
Because some of the questions are sounding like they're starting to go outside the scope of the EIR.
Oh, okay.
And that's why I'm, that's why I'm addressing this as a point of process with the group, because I'm a little bit infused by it.
Oh, okay. Well, I don't know. Myself, and I don't know, my take on it is, so far, the questions have been, have been focused on the EIR and what it means, what the process is, and what it means to approve it and so forth. So, and I...
Okay, well, that comforts me, that you feel that we're on course. That's good. Thank you.
Okay. You're fine?
I'm good.
Okay. How many more questions do you have?
Well, let me think for a second.
Because Bob's only got so many M&amp;M's here, so...
No, no, he told me he'd get as many as he needs.
Okay. There's more vending.
Probably about three or four.
Okay. And they are on the EIR, Ms. Clapper's. Okay. All right. Go for it.
All right. I'd like to turn to the issue of noise. Let me start with one that is just something I read in the EIR, which is of concern to me, and frankly, I mean, to me, I'd rather not see it in the EIR document. The noise analysis said, quote, "Typically residents that move into an area with an existing noise source that produces high noise levels, such as the existing Caltrain operations, become accustomed to noise events produced from rail transit and acclimate to the existing noise environment." It was used in the context of explaining adaptation and how, I guess, determining the level of significance of incremental noise impacts. What bothers me about that is, frankly, I don't think that we should be using the resident's ability to adapt to noise levels as part of a mitigation measure. I mean, the... So for me, I just make an observation, I would personally prefer to strike that entire thread of logic. What I'm concerned about is, I want to make sure that that kind of approach of adaptation as an inherent mitigation, and therefore that reduces the potential significance of an impact, that that was not part of the analysis. That was not part of the basis of the analysis. Because if it was part of the analysis, that would be a much bigger concern to me.
No, sir. That was not part of the analysis itself. It was a, based off of FTA studies on transfer-oriented development. It is a statement as to why people would choose to move into a new development within an existing noisy environment. But for the analysis itself, the EIR, the final EIR and the EIR use the city thresholds of an increase in 3 dBA in areas where the noise level exceeds the normally acceptable. And then it went further to use the FTA's incremental threshold based on existing noise levels. So that is where the threshold of significance was set, and mitigation measures were based on those thresholds of significance. So, for example, for the residents of the new development project, the EIR acknowledges that there would be a potential interior noise impact and came up with mitigation to provide for insulation and soundproofing within that development.
Okay. By the way, and you just touched on this, what is the, what is the source and basis for application of the 3 dBA noise threshold?
Cities' general plan policy.
Okay. Actually, you don't have to give me the... Let me paraphrase, rephrase the question. Why did the city pick three as opposed to one or two or one if it's, or three if it's below some level and one if it's above another level?
It's generally an industry standard threshold. Caltrans documentation on noise impacts, because roadways are one of the greatest sources of noise generation, states that a 1 to 2 dBA increase in noise levels is generally not perceptible or noticeable, whereas a 3 dBA increase would be considered perceptible. So that's the general, most frequently cited reason.
Okay. I guess the concern that I have, and I don't necessarily have a specific, another number to propose as an alternative. When I, every time I read these sort of, the technical analyses here, and I'm used to looking at those kind of analyses from my work in the pharmaceutical industry, I'm always sort of struck by, there would be a great set of parameters to use if I was, when I have to make decisions like whether to accept an EIR and what kind of mitigations to have in a project. There'd be a great set of parameters to use if I happened to be elected by a bunch of integrating sound microphones. But I'm not. I'm elected to represent a bunch of people. And what I would really be more interested in seeing is, what is the impact on behavior and lifestyle of changes in noise? Which aren't all due just to noise levels. They're also due to patterns of noise and types of noise and whatnot. So I just, I just have a general concern that that section of the analysis in the EIR may be technically absolutely correct, but may be, from my point of view, very limited use in terms of trying to assess an impact on the environment as defined by the noise impact on people.
What I'd like to do is actually ask for some context on that. Are you asking about the effects on the new residences? Or are you asking about the effects of the project would have on the built environment as far as increases in noise?
I believe that I'm asking more about the impact of the project on the existing area.
The EIR concluded, both in the final EIR and in the draft EIR, that the project itself would have no permanent impact or increases in noise associated with it. We did look at reflective noise, and I'm assuming this is what you're referring to.
Okay, but that's exactly what I read, and it was based on a bunch of analytical measurements, but I didn't see that change to whether or not it was going to change the frequency of which the number of people had difficulty getting to sleep or were woken up or what have you. That's my point. I'm willing to believe that the technical analysis is correct, because that's what the expertise is based on. But I'm just questioning whether it's really the right thing to be looking at, because I'm, I believe I'm charged, in the case of noise, with making an assessment as to whether or not we have adequately judged the impact of noise on people, not on sound levels.
Would be the effects on the environment, and that's what Sequel looks at. And that, in the context of noise, that does definitely include people and residences, but it's the effect of the project on the environment, and the project itself would not result in an increase in noise, and so the EIR concluded that impacts would be less than significant. It's not putting it down to a number as much as, if there was an increase that would exceed a threshold, that would be considered a significant effect. But there wouldn't be. The project just simply doesn't cause the increase. It's the existing noise levels that occur from the train operation.
Well, it does. I believe it did conclude that it did cause an increase. It just, it was determined not to be a significant increase.
It was a one decibel in, in a perfect environment with a completely reflective surface, it would cause a one decibel increase. And that, quite honestly, just doesn't meet the threshold for significant impact.
At least as established by your expertise.
By my expertise and the FTA and everybody else.
And general, yes, yes. I understand. But that, as I said, that still doesn't address my concern. Okay?
Understood.
I want to ask another question about noise, just because I'm trying to understand whether or not this also played a role. There seemed to be some element of the analysis which talked about the character or the noise coming from an existing source, meaning a rail line, a pre-existing rail line. So can somebody explain to me how that, the nature of it being a pre-existing rail line plays into the analysis? Or maybe it doesn't at all, and it just was, I misunderstood it.
Again, it would be the effect of the project on the environment as opposed to the existing source. The existing source is your baseline. And the project itself, would it result in a generation of excessive noise? A one decibel increase is determined to be not excessive or not an impact. So the rail line plays in, just in the fact that it is the noise generating source, not the building itself. Sequel looks at the effect of the project on the environment. And the project doesn't create the noise. So it's the rail line that created the noise. Because of the comments received regarding reflective noise, the final EIR looked at potential impacts from reflective noise. But the source itself is the rail line. And so it's the rail line that's creating the noise. The effect of the project on that noise, as I said, is a 1 dBA increase.
Okay. So it's not, it's not that, that I misread it. It's not that the fact that it's from an existing source somehow inherently mitigates it or establishes a different threshold. It just was a citation that it is from an existing source and...
Yes, that's, the noise generating source is the rail line itself, not the buildings.
Okay. Parking. One of the things that concerned me about, and by the way, just to start with, I presume, if I remember correctly, parking per se is not an environmental impact. Is that correct? But it is still something that was studied in the document, and it's still something that we can require mitigation on. Okay? One of the things that I found kind of interesting is, there has been a lot of discussion about whether or not there would be increased spillover parking into the residential neighborhood as a result of putting, relocating the rail line station and whatnot, and particularly moving the parking lot further south. At a different point in the EIR than that analysis, there was a statement that was made that says, "On-street parking along El Camino Real and within the downtown area would be available to serve the commercial portion of the proposed project. And it is reasonably foreseeable that persons seeking parking spaces to access that portion of the project would use those off-site spaces." That would seem to me to argue, I mean, I sort of sense a little bit of a contradiction there, or difference of standard, basically, not contradiction. That if we're saying, on the one hand, part of the parking footprint of the commercial retail space would spill over to the downtown area, why aren't we assuming that the commuters would spill over at least that equal a distance into the neighborhood? Which would be fairly far into the neighborhood, judging by the map I looked at. So I'm trying to understand that, what appears to be a discrepancy.
I'd like to ask Jessica Tercher to, from Nelson Nygaard. Do you attempt to answer that question?
Good evening. Your question specifically is whether, when you... Okay, so...
Let me try and rephrase it to be so... There's one portion of the document, when it's analyzing the parking impact of the commercial retail component of it. That says that some of the parking capacity that will be utilized by patrons of that establishment will include parking spaces in the downtown area, which for San Carlos is Laurel Street and Wheeler Plaza and whatnot. If we're willing to suppose that commercial retail customers will walk that far, then why wouldn't we assume that commuters would walk that far into the neighborhood as opposed to walking further down to the parking lot?
So there are several things here. First of all, there may be a possibility to add 30 spaces in an overflow lot south of the development or south of the Caltrain parking that could be made available either to retail or commercial for the development. But even within the development, it's been a very, very strong focus to share as much of the parking as possible. So when residents leave in the morning, parts of that parking could become available to commercial, especially the commercial employees. And there are parking, there is a lot of parking that can be, that is dedicated to the retail component. Your question regarding walking for Caltrain patrons, there are, right now, there is a demand of between 55 and 100 parking spaces for Caltrain patrons per day. And that can be, that is provided within a quarter mile, which is less than a five-minute walk of the Caltrain station. So there wouldn't really be a need to spill over into the residential neighborhood. If there is spill over into the residential neighborhood, there is a parking permit program that can be put in place at, free of charge to the residents in the neighborhood.
Just as an aside, because this came up, and I'm on the parking subcommittee here, so I have a little bit of familiarity with residential parking programs. I always thought of them initially as kind of a panacea. They have all sorts of problems associated with them and expenses as well, from an enforcement point of view and whatnot. So just as an aside, I'm not sure that, to me, that that's a particularly attractive solution. It sounds like what you're saying is that, is that there may be less need for individuals who are going to the commercial retail space to walk as far as was stated in the EIR. So perhaps it's just something where the language is superfluous. But as I said, it did strike me that if we're contemplating people are going to walk that far, they're easily going to walk that distance to save themselves four bucks a day in...
I think maybe the thing to think about is, if there is a retail here that serves both the downtown or visitors and the development visitors, that there will be walking between the uses. And there may be people who want to park at the train station or at the Transit Village and then walk into downtown. But you wouldn't see people walking more than 10 minutes or roughly five minutes when it is this type of land use. So I don't see, there may be some spillover to El Camino, but not a lot.
I should tell you about a story about my high school friend, it's very short, Stephen Hirsch, who used to go around saving 25 cents, spending 10 minutes driving around in a parking garage looking for a meter that had time left on it. And he always used to get me to pay for the parking, because I finally just said, "I want to go shopping."
Yeah.
People will walk quite, some people will walk quite a distance to save a few bucks. Last question has to do with the traffic circulation analysis. Mr. Svei, this is the one that I had mentioned to you, I think, some days ago. I'm concerned about how the analysis was done and how it accommodated the, I guess I would describe it, the, to me, relatively significant per-vehicle cost of people having to make U-turns off of El Camino to get into the accessways into the residential areas. Simply because, basically, the only way to get in there is from northbound El Camino. So if you're coming southbound on El Camino, or if you've, you know, you know what I mean. So do we have somebody here who can address that?
We do. Gary Black with Hexagon. And Mr. Black, your presentation is loaded up there, if you need it.
Well, we'll see if we need to look at the presentation or just answer the question this way. Gary Black with Hexagon Transportation Consultants. Yes, there would be, as you recognize, a need to make U-turns if you're traveling south on El Camino to access the driveways. There are various opportunities that exist along El Camino, left-turn pockets that are already there, that would be used by the traffic to make those U-turns. And in particular, there's the turn pocket that's out in front of the train station, which would be used by the cars that want to access the section of the project that's between San Carlos Avenue and Holly. They would use the U-turn, or the left-turn pocket, which would be converted into a U-turn pocket with this project. That question did come up through the planning process of whether that left-turn pocket could be eliminated, because we would eliminate the station access at that location. But we said we want to maintain that left-turn pocket there so that it could be used by U-turn cars to access the driveways. So there would be no additional construction of things out on El Camino in order to accommodate that.
It sounds like, if I'm understanding you correctly, you're saying that the size of the U-turn pocket that's contemplated or is feasible would be sufficient to deal with the queue of cars that would build up at worst case, generally, to deal with that?
Yeah, and that turn pocket's already there. So...
Okay.
It provides access to the train station right now.
It's, oh, maybe I misunderstood. Remind me again which pocket you're talking about? Which intersection?
San Carlos Avenue and El Camino. Maybe we, should we get the diagram? No.
I didn't, you know, I personally rarely turn into the train station from southbound El Camino, so I'm not sure that, I wasn't aware whether there's a pocket there. I know there's one going northbound.
There is a pocket there. Yeah. To turn into the station, and that would remain to serve the U-turns. We did include a diagram that shows the U-turns. We go down a few pages. How can you go down? This is the old presentation. Sorry. No, this one doesn't.
Oh.
So we probably don't want to take the time at this point to load in the new presentation, because it would take a while.
That's fine.
But, so there would be U-turns there at San Carlos Avenue, where there's already a pocket. And that would go for the units that are between San Carlos Avenue and Holly Street. And there would also be U-turns at Holly Street for the units that are north of Holly Street. So there'd be U-turns there as well. These are accounted for in the traffic study, and there's plenty of capacity in the turn lanes to accommodate this U-turning traffic. And also, perhaps your concern is that, well, it's going to slow down traffic on El Camino or...
It's part of it, yeah.
But the, because of the way the signals, the signal timing works, there really wouldn't be any noticeable effect due to those U-turns at those locations. there really wouldn't be any noticeable effect due to those U-turns at those locations.
And we tested that when we were modeling it under what I would, I'll call, weekend conditions. In other words, where the nature of transit-oriented development is that people use their cars less because they're using the rail line more to get to and from work. People make an argument that they will use, the residents who use mass transit for errands and stuff as well. I personally don't accept that because I don't think anybody who's going to be paying $3,000 a month for an apartment is going to do errands that way. So worst-case scenario for me, from a traffic point of view, is going to be on weekends.
Well, worst-case...
Residents coming in and out of the complex, I mean, sorry.
Right. Worst-case, actually, in our world, based on the surveys and counts that we've done over the years, is that the worst-case actually is the commute periods, even for transit-oriented development. So the time when people are normally going to work or coming home from work, so, you know, 8:00 in the morning, 5:00 in the afternoon. Those times are busier than any time on a weekend, any time on a Saturday or Sunday.
Because not everybody uses the train to get to work.
No, we do not assume in our traffic study that everyone's going to use the train to get to work. There's a 22% reduction that's been applied for usage of all, what we'll call, alternative modes. So that, some of that would be riding the train, some would be taking the bus, some would be walking. So for everything added together, there was a 22% reduction that was applied.
Which I suppose means that 78% of the units are still pumping cars out onto the road?
That's correct.
Okay. Second part of this last question, in a conversation I had with Mayor Grokot, he was reminding me before my joining the council that there was discussion met, it was the project about Cherry Street, the U-turn on, or the cut on Cherry Street. I am particularly concerned about what's going to happen to the traffic flow on Cherry Street when that becomes a signalized intersection, because I actually use it as a bypass to San Carlos Avenue a lot right now, and it's pretty terrible. Deliberately so, as staff has reminded me, they actually don't want people to be doing what I do, which is to cross Laurel Street. But we're going to be driving more people in the direction of crossing Laurel Street with the way the entrances are set up for this project. So what's, are we really sure that there's not going to be some major impact on the traffic flow across Laurel Street on Cherry?
Well, there, interestingly, subsequent to the traffic study being done for this project, there was a traffic study done for the Wheeler Plaza, sorry, I just blanked out on the name of the plaza. The Wheeler Plaza Residential Development. They take, took what I would consider, quite frankly, a closer look at the intersection of Laurel and Cherry. And that, that traffic study is recommending that that intersection be converted to a four-way stop because of the added traffic and pedestrians in that area. So I think, I don't know if that Wheeler Plaza project is approved, or whether that is a condition of approval, but there very well could be a four-way stop in the future there at Laurel and Cherry. Should make it easier to cross.
Yeah, it's, I appreciate the explanation, it does give me some comfort, but I have to admit, I'm still very concerned about that particular route. Because as I understand it, Cherry Street is, the entrance to Cherry Street is going to be a fairly major access point to the Kissimmee Ride. Is that correct?
It moves the, the traffic that right now comes into the station, San Carlos Avenue, would move to Cherry.
Right.
That traffic's already on El Camino, so that's not really the kind of traffic that you're worried about. It sounds like you're worried about traffic that would come from the west part of San Carlos and would try to cross over El Camino and would use Cherry instead of San Carlos Avenue, for example.
Correct.
I wouldn't expect to see much noticeable impact of cars doing that because there's not tremendous delays using San Carlos Avenue, and they wouldn't save much time because there will be a signal there. And a lot of times, if you're trying to make a left turn out of there now, where there's no signal, it seems like you have to wait for a long time. But if you actually put a stopwatch on it, and then compared that to how long you have to wait at a signal, you'd probably find that the time was about the same. It's just that, when you're waiting at a signal, you're not expecting to be able to go until the signal turns green. So you don't really count that time. So when, we study this all the time, and it's interesting that the time goes very, very slowly if there's no signal and you're just looking for a gap. It's perceived, if you sit there for a minute, that that is just ridiculous, a long time. If you come to a red light, you'll sit there for a minute, and you won't even think about it.
I agree with you, that would, I won't go back into it, that'll get us back into the issue of impacts based on perceptions or based on numbers, and, but thank you for the information.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to extend the meeting to 11 o'clock.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I could probably come up with a few more, but I'm satisfied for now, thank you.
So, no more questions, now we go into a discussion. Who wants to jump into it first, anybody?
Why don't I just, do you want a motion and then a discussion, or do you want, or just discussion before a motion?
Have a little bit of discussion first.
Sure. You know, the environmental impact report, I think it's been talked about here a number of times. It's a, it's a, it's under a California Environmental Quality Act, which is a very complicated thing, needless to say. It's been around for a long time, it's been adjusted, it's been moved around. To me, it's a technical document. If and when, if we approve this environmental impact report tonight, there is absolutely no certainty that this project will ever be built. There is none, because the next one, the entitlement process, is the, in my opinion, is the big, big one. And we're going to be talking about all this again, but that's the way, the nature of the beast. And that's where the big, big items are, in my opinion. It's, you know, like you mentioned a lot of times, perception. I could, I could have 30 pages of questions, and I'm sure all of us could, about agreeing or disagreeing with that individual, that expert, that expert, that expert, that expert, that expert, whatever. Because in reality, we've experienced certain things, and we go, "That doesn't make sense, it's counterintuitive, it doesn't make any sense." But it fits to the, what they're trying to do with the law, and trying to do the mitigation. Not everything can be mitigated. As Mr. Svei said, the project is the project. It's, we're not, we're not trying to design it, we're not trying to change at this level. We will next time, but at this level, it's what the developer puts out, it's what the consultant does the environmental impact report on, and that's what we're trying to talk about. And there are a lot of good points that have been brought up by the folks on the east side, in their comments, and brought up from the dais. But in my mind, it's still a technical document, and as was evidenced by the Planning Commission, and was advised by them when they passed it 5.0. I know they had four meetings, and they had lots and lots of questions, more than we had, probably. So in my mind, it's a technical document, we move the process forward, and the next one is where we, we really, the rubber hits the road. So anyway, that's, those are some of my comments.
Just briefly reply to one element of what you said, Mr. Gassili. I do agree with you, it's a technical document. It's a technical document, however, that's also looking at things that, certain things that are subjective. The specific thing I did want to say, though, is, is having sat through the, I don't know if other folks had an opportunity to watch the tapes, having sat through the Planning Commission meeting, meetings, my sense was a big part of why the Planning Commission voted the way it did, was that they were struggling with it, they had a lot of questions and concerns, but by law, they don't really have the authority to substitute their judgment for the experts, okay? We do. We can't do that willy-nilly, we can't just say, "Oh, well, we feel like doing this today, so we're going to substitute our judgment." That's what makes it a more, you know, a different thing for us, and so I just wanted to mention it in the context of, the vote from the Planning Commission may have been less than met the eye, in that respect.
I agree with you, but as also indicated by counsel, you have to have the evidence to change it, in our level at this EIR situation. When we go on to the next level, we can change whatever we want, we don't need evidence, we can decide what we want to do. And that's where I'm going to, and that's where I'm going, and that's where I want to go to. The entitlement process, that's where, in my opinion, the rubber meets the road. So that's just my opinion, so.
No, I understand, and the evidence, and we talked about this with the attorney as well, in our deliberations. The evidence are things that are, you know, reasonable person standards can also apply, things that come up in discussion here can apply too. So all I'm saying is that we are not, strictly speaking, limited solely by the numbers that are recorded by somebody in the document.
We're not limited, but if you want to change the EIR, you've got to have evidence to do it.
Yep, you're right, you're right.
Ms. Glaber?
I'll echo what Mr. Gassili said, and I think that this document has met the requirements for what the EIR is supposed to do for this project, from taking us past this one threshold and getting on to the more significant meet of the project.
Yes, a big project, there's been a lot done on it, it's not perfect, the process isn't even perfect. It kind of reminds me of, just as an analogy, you have plans to add on to your home, you know, and you take it to the city, and they say you've met all the building codes, and the setbacks, and the drainage, and height limits, and all that, and the city says, "You're good to go, you can go build your project." But your neighbor looks at the plans and says, "That's the ugliest thing I ever saw, and you're going to put that up next to my house?" I mean, it doesn't mean that you're actually going to build that project, because if you do, you're going to have an angry neighbor forever. So, you know, yes, you've, you know, you've met all the requirements, but getting on to the actual project is an entirely different process. And so, you know, I agree, this is, you know, even if we state that a particular impact isn't significant, doesn't mean that we can't ask the developer to change the project, make changes that we think are necessary, and we think are legitimate concerns of our, of our residents. And that's why I value this process, as I said on the article in the paper the other day, is that it's really what, what the staff tells us, and what members of the audience tell us, we get a lot of input. So I'm, I'm, do I think this is a great document? It's a document, it's not a perfect document, it's got a lot of, probably has a lot of flaws in it, but it moves us along, and that's what I'd like to see us do, is move the process along. Because, like Mr. Gassili says, the project may never be built, but we'll never know that unless we get beyond this step. So, that's all I have to say for the moment.
I'm still thinking.
All right. Maybe we should take a motion then.
You were just reading my mind.
Make a comment.
Sure.
Because we were initially talking about, you know, Bob and I were talking about one particular aspect of things. But now we're talking more about our general reaction to the document. There isn't, there is an EIR that I would have no problem supporting. That gets back to the issue that, Mr. Mayor, you were discussing with Ms. Shimko earlier in the day. It's almost impossible to imagine a situation, except when an applicant withdraws the application, that there isn't some document that can be approved, okay? I have sufficient concerns about a number of areas in this document where I think that certain analyses that should have been done were either not done or were not done to what I think is an adequate level, that it concerns me. I won't go through the longer list of all of them, I'll just, I'll just pick one, which happens to be, I think, one of the first ones that I was questioning staff and our experts on. I am concerned about the impact on the character of the community. And I don't believe that the document actually did a particularly thorough job of discussing that. And what I mean by that is, I believe that, for better or for worse, what's going to happen with this project is going to set a standard for what you're going to see on both sides of El Camino, running through San Carlos. And I grew up near New York City, the concrete canyons in New York are 80 stories tall. That's not what San Carlos is. And yet I suspect that what we're going to end up seeing here, because of establishing a standard, changing the character of the community, that we're going to see something that's a fairly significant change to the character of the town. And that concerns me, and in the particular case of this particular document, I don't believe that that was analyzed properly. Like, I don't even really think it was analyzed, in fairness, I don't really even think it was analyzed. There were pieces of it addressed in various portions of the document, but there was no overarching review of it. It's admittedly be a fairly subjective thing, but that, it is, as I understand it, an element of SEQA, the character of the community.
Well, I guess before we go for a motion, I'm going to give my impression then, since everybody else has. I understand that this is just a step in the process, but I think, as I alluded to in my questioning, I see one particular piece of this, I agree with what Mr. Olbert said, but one particular piece of this I see as terribly broken. And I'm being consistent here, I saw it being broken on Wheeler Plaza as well. My fear, especially with the two projects being looked at in so close proximity to each other, and the possibility of both of them being built very closely to one another, my concern is, you introduce 400 new housing units to San Carlos, you will have a significant impact on traffic, and you will have a significant impact on Holly Street, which is already impacted to, to what, to me, what is an unacceptable level. Now, let's look at this. I asked the question, "How do we mitigate?", and I was told about TDM programs, which may or may not work. And then the other project that I was answered with was, "Well, we're going to pay money, the developer will pay into a fund, and that fund will go to a project identified by the city, which is improvements at Holly Street and 101." I remember that project being first brought up when I was over at Hiller Aviation Museum, and we were having a hearing on the Palo Alto Medical Foundation, and the same project was mentioned. Now, in my mind, that made sense, because that project is over there, and the traffic to that project is going to come off of predominantly, or a good percentage of those people visiting that facility are going to be coming from other communities, they're going to come along 101, get off at Holly, and use the intersection at Holly and Industrial. So to improve the flow of traffic at 101 and Holly, that's, that's, to me, that's an acceptable mitigation factor for the traffic that that project will create. It is not, however, an acceptable project for the traffic that this project will create. It simply is not, because it only addresses one factor, and that is the morning commute factor. And I don't even think it addresses that effectively, it's too far away, you don't know how many people necessarily are going to be using that route to go to work in the morning. I suppose you could make some kind of assumption, but Mr. Simon's boss has told me that all you need is a 10% increase in traffic, when you get to a certain threshold with traffic, all you need is a 10% increase, not even that. And you can go from something that's flowing acceptably to something that's a parking lot. And that is my concern. And I don't think we have identified appropriately in this document a mitigating factor for the traffic that will be caused by this project. And so, if I had my way, I would send this back, not certify it, send it back, have further study of the traffic looked at, compile it also with what's an expected project anyways at this point, Wheeler Plaza, and be looking at what would, what's the overall flow of... at what's the overall flow of traffic in the downtown. It was mentioned about Cherry Street. I see problems at El Camino and Holly. I see problems at Holly and Old County Road. And I see problems because of this project pushing all the commuter traffic down towards the southern part of El Camino with the Kissin Ride. I see problems in our downtown, on Cherry and other streets, because what people will do to avoid traffic impacts, and I see this happen already, I live in the downtown, so I see a lot of this already, where you see people identifying other ways to get to work in the morning to avoid what everybody else is doing. And that spillover is going to have an impact on this community, and to me, what I read in the document, it's not addressed adequately. And again, there's no project identified on this side of town as a mitigation for the problems that is going to create. And lastly, the problem I see is a problem we're putting on our neighbor, Belmont, because 300 units approximately, or, excuse me, not 300, 200 units are on the north side of Holly, residential, and every person leaving that complex in the morning has got one choice, a right turn. And so they're either going to go up to the first intersection, they can make a U-turn and come back, and go through the light at Holly and try to get out to 101 if they're trying to get to 101, or they're going to go up to either Harbor if they're going south, or they're going to go up to Ralston. And that concerns me, of the folks leaving in the morning and going that way, and the impact that may have on our neighbor. But bottom line is, I don't see a project, other than paying money into a fund, I don't see a project to mitigate traffic that's identified in this EIR that, to me, is acceptable and effective. And so, again, for me, I would reject this at this point. I know we can't reject it, you know, totally, but I would send it back and ask our staff, and ask Mr. Black and the experts that deal with traffic to look at the entirety of what we're expecting with traffic. Again, not just with this project, but we know Wheeler. We're, you know, a proponent of Wheeler. Putting those two together and looking at the complete flow of traffic. I've got other issues in here, too, but to me, that's the big one. That's the one that affects everybody.
Question for city attorney, you know, maybe Mr. Sade first. I'm looking here at alternatives on page three of our staff report, and the first one is adopt a resolution for the final environmental impact report, improve a table of improvement measures for the environment entitlement phase. Now, you indicated that even if we approve this table, we can still change it later.
That's correct.
Okay. So I, okay, well, in other words, we're just basically sort of piggybacking on what the planning commission did without changing it now. We could change it now, but we're just going to pass it on, and then we could available the next time to change.
Yes.
All right. Mr. Mayor, can I make a motion?
Sure.
Make a motion to adopt a resolution number, I'm sorry, 2013-5, a resolution of the city council of the city of San Carlos, certifying the completeness and adequacy of a final environmental impact report for the San Carlos Transit Village project.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Roll call.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
No.
Mayor Grocott?
No. Okay, so that's the EIR. Do we want to, or do we have time this evening to get into these other measures, or do we just want to leave them for the next phase? We don't have to touch them right now necessarily.
Mr. Mayor, I have to admit, I'm a little confused here, but wasn't this the section that staff has told us several times, it helps them in terms of guiding the next phase to get input from us?
Yeah. I guess part of the question is, do you want to get into that at?
Oh, as opposed to next meeting?
This late hour, right.
I'm confused. I apologize. What are we speaking about?
I'm talking about the other document that the planning commission adopted on the improvement measures.
Recommendation B.
Recommendations improvement.
Oh, I see.
Through the chair, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Maybe I misheard, but I thought the motion that was made included the improvement measures, because that's the way.
No, it did not. I don't think it did.
Did it?
That's why I asked the question.
Okay, I'm sorry.
If we approve that resolution, we're approving the improvement measures, but we can change them again later. That's why I asked that question.
Okay, all right.
Is there, there's two different resolutions, isn't there?
I didn't see. Is there a second?
Is there a second one?
There was an alternative motion that would have been direction to send the matter, the EIR back, excuse me, the project back to the planning commission before you considered the EIR. That was item two, but the motion was number one that Mr. Grisilli made.
Right.
Now.
But what we just approved is specifically for the environmental impact report, which does not include that table.
Well.
So I'm confused.
Well, the resolution includes.
Why don't we leave it to Mr. Grisilli, who made the motion and who was the second?
Well, I, the reason I asked the question.
What was your motion?
The reason I asked the question is because I assumed it would be in the.
Question doesn't matter. The matter is, what was your motion?
My motion was to approve the resolution for, I'll read it, it's pretty easy, for the environment completeness and adequacy of the final EIR for the San Carlos Transit Village.
Exactly. That's what I heard, was to approve the EIR, not anything else.
Okay, well then, I was just reading from the alternatives, which included, so that was the confusion.
You made a motion, there was a second, we voted on it.
Okay.
Done deal.
Mr. Mayor, could I make another motion?
You're welcome to.
Okay, thank you. Just so we'll get, make sure we keep everybody happy here. I'll make a motion to approve the table of improvement measures for the entitlement phase for the San Carlos Transit Village project.
I second the motion.
Discussion on that item.
I'd like to ask a question. Can we, at the next meeting, take a closer look at those improvement measures and maybe add to them? I mean, I've got things I'd like to add to it.
Mr. Collins, that's exactly what I asked the question of. We are going to be able to change, even though I'm, I can guarantee you, I do not like some of these, and I may want to add to them, but I'm just trying to, again, as we talked about, move the process along. So that's all I'm trying to get at here. I think a lot of these are very good, but they could be improved, or possibly some aren't too good.
Added to.
Aren't too good, yeah.
Okay.
But the point is, we're going to get the chance to do that.
I don't have a problem voting for it. As long as I know, we're going to get another whack at it.
That's what I'm told by staff and council, so we're going to get another.
That's correct, and I'm not sure that the next council meeting would be the appropriate time, but you're actually going to get lots of whacks at it as it moves forward.
Yeah, I would say that the next council meeting isn't the time to do it. It's the time when we get it to the next phase.
But not, in the not-too-distant future, we will agendize specifically the AI for the council to have a discussion on.
So we have a motion in a second?
We do.
If I may, I have to admit, I'm a little confused by the input that we've gotten from staff as to whether, on this particular issue, as to whether or not we will in fact be able to come back and make adjustments. I know that we can make adjustments in the entitlement phase. I had thought that the mitigation measures were in fact bound to the EIR. And so you don't have to further explain. I'm just explaining why I'm going to vote no on this. It's mostly because I'm just, I want to be, I'm concerned about that, okay?
So it sounds like you're mixing the mitigation measures and the improvement measures altogether, then, rather than there being two separate lists?
No, what I'm calling into question is whether or not we truly will in fact have an opportunity to come back and change what's in that table, which I understand are mitigation measures.
No, they're improvement measures.
Improvement measures.
Specifically talking about improvement measures, not any mitigations that are part of the EIR. It's a whole separate table. It's not part of the EIR.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
That were items that the planning commission specifically identified.
There's a point here for, well, there's a motion in a second. It doesn't seem to make a heck of a lot of sense to me to vote for something when you're not pleased with it and you intend to see it come back because you want to change it. To me, you would vote no, saying, "I'm not happy with this, and I do want it to come back on this dais, and I do want to discuss it more thoroughly and throw out, you know, some other discussion items on it and see it changed." And so, there's just no way in the world I'm going to vote yes on this tonight.
And that's a good concern. I'll just add that I do have some things that I could see changing in this also, but I think it sends a very good direction to the developer in terms of the kinds of things that we want to see in the next phase of the design, and that we want to send that message. And then as we work on the design issues, yes, there may indeed be some fine tuning, and as we get more information, I think that will better prepare us to fine tune some of these requests. I think the planning commission did a good job of identifying the target areas where the environmental impact report didn't have the, it wasn't in its bandwidth to address certain issues, and I think they did a good job of identifying those here. But I think they will continue to be tweaked, so to speak, as we move forward.
I guess it depends what kind of message you're trying to send to the developer, then.
Mr. Mayor, if I may ask staff a clarifying question. Based on the discussion you were having with Ms. Clapper, what would be the practical implications of a rejection of, a no vote, basically, on this next item, on the motion currently before the council?
Well, a no vote would mean that the council was not endorsing the planning commission's improvement measures as they were recommending to the council. However, many of those improvement measures on the list were an attempt to begin to address some of the entitlement phase-type issues, and I think you would probably find, you know, rather stronger support for those items on the impact measure list than the issues from the community, than the issues you're facing in the EIR, which was already approved. So while, I think, Mr. Mayor, if what I hear you saying is, "I don't think the improvement measures go far enough," then I would suggest a motion, if you were to make a motion to approve them, that you include in that motion that the council would like in the next 60 days to see the item come back for additional discussion, because you'd like to add, subtract things.
I understand that, Mr. City Manager. However, I can count up here, and I think a mixed vote sends that message very clearly, that we want this to come back. We're not happy with it as a council. We don't have a unanimous vote on it, and we sure do want to see it here within 60 days, because we've got issues with it. So it's a little bit like, you know, when you ask a gal out for a date and she gives you a sort of, you know, then you get the idea that maybe I need to do some improvements before I ask her again.
No, I, Mr. I would just add to that, just to be clear, is I can see council members voting for or against the improvement measures.
I can too.
That would feel exactly the same way, that it's not a done document, so.
Mr. Mayor, just, I'd like to, maybe I can help with Councilmember Olbert's question about not being sure that you're going to see it again. Remember that the improvement measures were a recommendation from the planning commission to the developer. So the next step in this process, should you, you know, even approve or not approve those improvement measures, is it's going to go back to the planning commission for the project. The planning commission's going to reevaluate all these improvement measures again with new public hearings, new testimony, and that only then will come back to the council for further review after the planning commission's already looked at the improvement measures again. What you'd be doing tonight is simply, in considering these improvement measures, is you're basically saying, "Planning Commission, I like what you've done so far on the improvement measures, and we expect, fully expect you to reevaluate the project in the future," because that's what I think I heard the planning commission say when they approved it.
Okay, we ready to vote?
Just a point of order before we vote. That then means that we don't need to amend the motion to include a subsequent meeting 60 days down the road, because it's going to go back to the planning commission anyway?
Yeah.
Okay.
Roll call.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
No.
Mayor Grocott?
No. Okay, that brings us to item 10A. We do have one more item here that we can hopefully cover in about five minutes, or we'll have to extend again.
In the interest of.
Before you get started, do you think, maybe we'll just do about a 10-minute extension?
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Mayor, I might make a motion to extend the meeting to 11:15, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
That way we're not.
Yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Moore.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, in the interest of time, I'll field questions, but I think since you have the staff report, I really don't have anything to add.
Very good. Thank you very much. Any questions?
No.
Okay. Discussion, or I guess we can have a motion, but we need to discuss who we would appoint from the council to represent us with this process.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I would volunteer, if no one else, I would be happy to volunteer on this. I would nominate you.
Okay.
But if someone else wants it, then we can.
Okay.
That would be great, if you would do that, because I think you have a perspective over a period of time of how things have been, the direction things have been going in, and I would appreciate your expertise.
But that's up to everybody else.
I just have one question, since you want to be nominated. Just if you could give some of your views on.
Sure.
What you see going on here and what you'd like to see come out of this.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. I think Mayor Aguirre's letter is right on, and so does, and the staff report speaks to it. I think that this, you know, again, I was fairly close to this process when we went through the RFP and et cetera to get the new carriers and so on. And I think what's happened is, over the years, this has turned into a lot, a lot more than a technical situation. And I think what happened is that the 12 member agencies basically said, "Well, it's garbage collection, so what's, why do we need to talk about it?"
Right.
And I think, to use the same words, yeah, it's garbage collection. We need to talk about it, because there's dollars and cents, and we just had to raise rates, and we go round and round and round. Now, having said that, I don't know what we're going to find, I don't come in with a pre-existing judgment on, hey, they're doing a great job, they're not doing a great job, or whatever. But I think if we get some of us, like Mayor Aguirre and myself and some other folks that are, that really want to dig into this, I think it's going to be a good idea, so we can find out what some of the details are that we don't have, we're not given before. This group can do that, and as staff mentioned, we might want to set up in SBWMA a situation where we have like the oversight board, or we call it an oversight board, or a board like ourselves above the folks that are on the regular one, and we have much more input. So, I mean, that's basically what I'm looking at here, is to try to figure out with other cities who have other issues, to get, you know, all of us together. I think there's only five or six so far that have indicated they want to do this, but hopefully the rest of the folks would jump in and do it, because I think it's a good idea. Because it got away from us, I think. I honestly believe that, and I didn't think it could, but it did.
One of the things that I would hope out of this process is that there might come a time where we would actually do a study session, and you would tell us what you're finding out, and then we would give you some direction.
Direction, sure.
With discretion, of course.
Yeah.
But some direction on, okay, if that's what's going on, this is what we would like to see.
I would think this would be the situation that would occur. We'd have a meetings, we'd talk about different things, and I would literally come back to the council and say, "This is what we're doing on this. What does the council feel?" And you may feel like, "Hey, this is a great idea. Let's stick with this," or, "No, no, we don't want to go there, so let's get out," or do whatever. Yeah, definitely. It's not going to be a one-man show of, "I get to decide everything," or anybody who's on this, if it's me or whoever. In my opinion, it shouldn't be that way. It should come back to the council for consensus.
Through the mayor, if I just might add a comment or two here. If this group does ever meet, and it goes forward, it would be an informal group. It wouldn't be subject to the Brown Act. It wouldn't really have any authority or power whatsoever, other than to do exactly what the vice mayor just described, which is to sort of go back and help inform your councils, who could then take an action to send a message to the SBWMA board. to the SBWMA board that could begin to trigger, that board would have to make revisions to its, its bylaws and structures, which would then have to come back to all the member agency councils for approval. So you're going to, you know, if there's significant change that evolves here, there's going to, it's going to require a lot of different council interactions before it's ever actually in place.
You going to make a motion, or are you going to ask a question?
Actually, I was just going to make a comment. One of the things that does concern me a little bit about this, not about your candidacy, Bob, is the.
Looking for garbage.
Right. The, I am concerned, I personally think that this group ought to seriously consider following the Brown Act, particularly if it starts being, you know, a large number of, of public agencies. This is a, you know, this is a billion-dollar contract, effectively. It's an, it's an enormous asset temptation, lots of things. And I just think, in fact, let me pose you this question, I mean, no one individual gets to decide what the group is going to do. What are your views on that issue about whether it ought to follow the Brown Act or not?
Well, you know, it's, as, as the city manager said, I think, I think it's a matter of, we get, we need to have legal, we need to have an opinion. I mean, a legal council, we sit together and, and we, we're not going, again, like he said, we have, technically, we have no power whatsoever, because the board, the SBWMA board is already set up. All we, we could sit there and advise till the cows come home, and they could say, no. But again, that's why it has to come back to council. So it's, it's not, it's, to me, it's a bunch of people sitting around talking about different ideas. If we ever come to something that we want to change, then it's a whole different dynamic. But I, I don't, we're not, we're not a rule-making body in that situation. We're just six or seven or eight people sitting around a table talking, because we don't have any power.
Grand Boulevard Initiative.
Change it. The board still has the power until we go back and change all the rules and regulations. Mr. Rubens, excuse me, is that, that's basic, did you hear what I was saying?
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I know it wasn't very important. But anyway, my point was, if we sit, if six or seven of us get around a table and start talking about something like this, we really have no power, because the board and the rules and regulations, they have the power until we go back to our cities and, and change it, change it over. So we don't really, like I said, we just don't have the legislative thing, so it's a bunch of people sitting around talking.
And that's exactly what we were talking about, what the makeup of the body and what its authority would be. I think that's an unresolved question. I've been talking with other city attorneys about what the authority of the board would be, and, and, you know, in fact, whether it might be a Brown Act body.
And I, Mr. Olbert, I'd look to council, you know, with the different cities' attorneys, and if they say it's, you know, I'm, I'm just giving an opinion.
But I think you're right, it's not going to have any direct authority over the policy of SBWMA or of the councils, because the individual members aren't going to, are only going to be one voice on each council.
Asking a slightly different question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Which was, let's say the advice, hypothetical advice from councils comes back and says, no, you don't, you know, you, you don't have to follow the Brown Act. What's your feeling about whether the organization or the group of people sitting around the table still should?
To me, I, if I don't have to follow the Brown Act, I, I think it's, it's a much more, I don't, I don't, I don't see the problem, because you're, you're sitting there, you don't, you don't have any, it's like me going down the street and talking to people in the street, or going to, going to another, going to the council cities and talking about anything. In other words, if I could talk to six different mayors of the council cities about garbage, but we have no, we have no power to.
And.
I mean, that's just my opinion.
Councilmember Grisilli, the only, the only reason I, I mention that we're discussing it is just because of the, it's really the, the SBWMA JPA document that might make it more problematic as far as Brown Act. But if it's just a blue, a blue ribbon task force of people who are not, not necessarily board members of the JPA, that's one factor. The other factor is what, what this task force is going to do. Are we running out of time?
No, we got 11:15, we got plenty, 10 minutes.
If I may, I think we're the, were we covered by the Brown Act? If you're concerned about the public's knowing of what's going on and so forth, is when, when any recommendation from this blue ribbon comes to this dais and/or goes to the SBWMA board, it'll get discussed there, and it, the public has a chance for input and knowing what's going on. So.
If I can add to the conversation, I think if the council is wrestling with whether or not they'd like this group, or to sort of signal back to this group that they'd like to see those meetings held in public, I think that would be a perfectly appropriate comment to pass along to the group. You know, I still, I think if the group elected to meet in private, that you would still want to participate in the group, because you'd like to have a voice in the conversation. But I don't think there's, if it's the council's opinion that they'd like to see it, then you might add that to, to a motion tonight.
That's okay with me, I have no problem with that.
Right, and that was my sense.
I, I wouldn't, personally, I wouldn't even, I wouldn't even add it to a motion. I would, I would just tell you that, given this particular circumstance, given the history involved with this contract, given the history involved in the county about some of this stuff, it would be my strong hope that, that this group meets in public.
Well, like I said, I, I'd be more than willing to carry that information along to the people that are there, and then again.
Let's just me, nobody else.
No, I understand, but I'm still, but I tend to agree with you. And then making sure that somebody, some attorney's looking at this to make sure that, you know, right or wrong, and you, Mr. Rubens, you indicated you would talk to some other folks about it, and I think, before we even have a meeting, somebody's going to, the city attorneys are going to say, this is what you should be doing, you know, and whether we should or shouldn't.
I think that would have been the quicker way to answer the question.
We need a motion to appoint Bob to this blue ribbon task force.
I move that we appoint Councilmember Grisilli to be our representative on the trash-talking conference, council.
I'll second that. Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grokot?
Yes.
All right. Here, I'll use this. Word adjourned.